Councillors. Welcome, councillors. Can I ask you to please stand for the opening of the council? Almighty God, we, the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane, are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask you that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respects to elders past and present. Please be seated. I declare the meeting. I declare the meeting open and I remind all councillors of your obligations to declare material, personal and conflicts of interest where relevant and the requirement of such to remove yourself from the council chamber for debate and voting where applicable. Are there any apologies? There appear to be no apologies. May I please have a motion to confirm the minutes?
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,615th meeting held on Tuesday 5th of May 2020 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
A second please. It's been moved by councillor Landis, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the minutes of the 4,615th meeting of council held on the 5th of May 2020 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye and raise your hands. And those against, no and raise your hand.
Yeah, no.
Thank you. Councillors. I now draw your attention to the item on the agenda, question time. Are there any? Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Chair of any standing committee? Councillor Mackay.
Chair, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, residents of Brisbane are keen to know a timeline out of the restrictions put in place during the COVID-19 pandemic. Can you please outline for the chamber the Shriner administration's plan for transitioning to a phase of recovery?
The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you also to councillor Mackay for the question. Obviously, we've all been very much looking forward to a relaxation of the restrictions, being able to get out and about more, use public facilities, support local business. And before I go on, I did want to thank the people of Brisbane for how incredibly patient and understanding they've been and also compliant that they've been with the requirements that have been placed on them because, you know, these are unprecedented restrictions that we've had on our daily lives in a Western democracy. These are not the sort of restrictions that we would expect to have to go through in our lifetime. And I think it's been a good thing that people have really done the right thing and followed the rules. And we know that there are a small number of people that ignored the restrictions, but most people did the right thing. But now, moving forward, I know everyone's excited to get back out there. And it was great to be able to get the roadmap from the federal and state governments for the reopening, the staged reopening of a number of facilities that people are looking forward to seeing. From a council point of view, we're looking forward to seeing things like our playgrounds, also our outdoor gyms, BMX tracks reopened, and also our libraries as well, to a limited extent. We still have to comply with the requirements such as the 10-person limit, which means that our libraries can't be opened in the traditional way that we would have expected. They have to be open for drop-in, drop-off and pick-up opportunities, so quick in and out. And so we're opening up all of the things that we can possibly open up to be safe and meet the state requirements. But I did want to confirm today that at this stage, it does not look as though we would be able to open our pools this coming weekend. The pools, like many facilities, have to adhere to the 10-person limit. And like many businesses across the city and many other organisations, have to grapple with how that might work. Now, obviously, we're going into the winter period for our swimming pools, which would normally see around a third of our pools closed down anyway. But we're hearing from our operators that it is simply not going to be viable or practical to reopen an entire pool for 10 people. So that reopening of pool, the pools won't be happening at this stage, but as restrictions are relaxed further, we'll obviously do what we can to make sure that where pools are heated, they can open up during that winter period. But, you know, we obviously, we expect and appreciate the community's understanding with these 10-person requirements. For all of the costs associated with opening and running our swimming pools, and the fact that these are operated by, in most cases, local small businesses, operators that are less sees of our council pools, they've got to gear up their staff and determine whether it's a viable option. And at this stage, the feedback is that it's not viable for 10 people. Now, there's questions that come up, like if you were to have 10 people in a pool, how long can they stay? You know, who gets in the door? Some of these practicalities, you know, just can't practically be managed with a 10-person limit. But overall, we've seen a great response when it comes to the relaxation of restrictions. It was great to be able to open the dog parks this weekend that's just gone past. And the feedback we've had across the city has been really positive. And once again, most of those dog parks were used very responsibly by dog owners. And we know that the dogs of Brisbane have been keen to get out and about. We've had an increase in barking dog complaints during the close down, with many more people at home, with, you know, dogs not getting maybe the level of exercise, getting out and about to run around as much as they would like. And so to have those facilities reopened has been fantastic. And we're looking forward to progressing now with other facilities that can safely reopen, including our playgrounds, barbecues, outdoor gyms and other facilities that meet the requirements. So look forward to working with all of you to make sure we can reopen those facilities smoothly over the coming weekend. And also, I did want to confirm councillor Mackay, that as things reopen again and as businesses are getting more visitation from Monday next week, we will be going back to the regular enforcement of parking restrictions.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
As well. Thank you.
Are there further questions?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Cumming.
Thank you. My question is to the Chair of the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee, councillor Marks. Councillor Marks, you may or may not be aware that two large gum trees that were shading a playground in Rotary Park Heathwood were removed by council in July 2019. Are you able to inform the chamber why these trees were removed?
Councillor Marks.
Sorry. Yes, thank you, Chair. And I thank councillor Cumming for the question. I'm sorry councillor Cumming, I don't have an answer for you for that here. I wasn't the Chair back in July 2019, but I'm more than happy to get that information and provide it to you when it comes to me. Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you. My question is to the Chair of Finance Administration and Small Business Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, the Lord Mayor announced an Economic Recovery Task Force to assist businesses soon after the state enforced social distancing and lockdown rules due to COVID-19. Can you please give us an update on what the task force has achieved so far and how the Shriner administration is backing Brisbane businesses?
Councillor Allen.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Hammond for your question. I note that you're a staunch advocate for the many businesses in your ward and certainly I know that you've got their interests at heart and want to assist their recovery post-COVID-19. It's long been known that this responsible administration acts in the best interests of residents as well as businesses. And act in their best interests, we will continue to do. As council navigates its way through the coronavirus pandemic, so too do many thousands of businesses that call Brisbane home. It has been said many times before, but is no truer than it is now, that small and medium business are the engine room of our economy. There are more than 127,000 registered businesses within the Brisbane local government area, with Greater Brisbane's gross domestic product or gross regional product estimated at 171 billion. Business, particularly small business, is a big deal. Such is the significance of business to the Brisbane economy that the Lord Mayor established the Economic Recovery Task Force to support the recovery of business in this city. This is a clear demonstration of the Lord Mayor's commitment to the business community and reflects his understanding of the challenges being faced by the business community. The task force will drive council's contribution to the recovery of the city over the next couple of years and is dedicated to rebuilding of the Brisbane economy and helping the city get back on its feet post the coronavirus crisis. Economic recovery is a joint effort with multiple stakeholders, and this task force will help to support the normalisation of economic activity as soon as possible. Through both internal and external consultation, we are working to develop and implement initiatives that encourage and foster business recovery and motivation and participation in the local economy. As Chair of the task force, I can speak to inroads already being made. While recognising the obvious physical...
Councillor Allen. Councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, I've lost your microphone.
Hang on.
There you are.
Okay, sorry. How much did you miss there?
Um. I'm not sure, maybe 20 seconds?
Okay, fine, okay. The task force will drive council's contribution to the recovery of the city over the next couple of years and is dedicated to the rebuilding of council's economy and helping the city get back on its feet. Now, obviously, recognising the difficulty of not being able to have meetings, we've still been able to reach out to the wider community and have also formed an external consultative group. And this is effectively a subsidiary.
Councillor Allen, I've lost your microphone again.
Thing happening here that I'm just not... Look, apologies. This is happening remotely and certainly I'm not pressing any buttons, but certainly I'll continue as I can. The priority of the task force is obviously to help Brisbane's businesses recover. We recognise that there is important work to do, that council has a role to play. We're not the only representative group or stakeholder that can support the recovery. However, we are one that can certainly smooth the way. Now, while the task force is a relatively newly formed entity, it has certainly been working diligently. We have a number of senior council officers involved in this particular initiative, and also myself and a number of senior councillors, and also a wide range of representatives from industry associations. Our approach to this...
There's just no independent green options.
No, 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 no detentions.
Now, we are constantly watching this particular situation unfold. So we've intentionally made the task force nimble. We've kept it small. It needs to be adapting quickly. And one of the things that I wanted to announce today is to continue to support the small business community. We are announcing a Business in Brisbane Economic Recovery Survey to be conducted between the 12th of May and the 12th of June. This is designed to allow businesses to feed into our recovery efforts. And certainly, we want the business community to have their say to ensure that our responses are as tailored as they can possibly be. And I thank councillor Hammond for her question. And certainly, I know that she'll be supporting her local businesses. Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Now, thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee, councillor Marks. Councillor Marks, Queensland Health figures reveal that the Metro North region has experienced one of the biggest spikes in Ross River Fever in four years. According to Queensland Health, there is no treatment for Ross River Fever, only prevention. We know there have been chronic underspends on mosquito spraying under this administration in the 2018-19 year alone. That underspend totalled $1.16 million. From January to the end of April, Metro North recorded 295 people having been diagnosed with Ross River Fever. That's more people with Ross River Fever than the whole entire year for each of the previous four years. Councillor Marks, can you explain to Brisbane residents why you failed to protect them from Ross River Fever?
Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I'm... There's probably an issue myself. Yes, thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Cassidy for the question. Well, it's certainly the right time to be the Chair of City Standards with two questions and one chambers meeting. Thank you both very much for being so interested in my portfolio. It's actually not correct that there's been an underspend in mosquito spraying. As we've said and has been said many times in this chamber, certainly in the eight years that I've been attending the chambers, there is an unlimited budget on mosquito spraying. The Lord Mayor has always made that commitment. The Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna and the previous Lord Mayor Graham Cook have always made that commitment and that commitment has never changed. We are the only council that employ two professional entomologists, and those are the two professionals that we take our advice from as to when and where we should spray. As you know councillor Cassidy, it's a very scientific issue as far as the spraying of mosquitoes goes. It has a lot to do with the titles, the weather, whether it's rained, all that sort of stuff. And we are guided, as always, by the two professionals that we employ. And we put a dollar figure in the budget purely so that there's a line item in the budget. If we need more than that money in the budget, then the Lord Mayor says, go ahead, write the cheque, do it. If we don't spend that much for whatever reason, then that money just sits there. But there's always... That the Lord Mayor has always said there's an unlimited budget on mosquito spraying, and that has not changed.
Further questions? Councillor Toomey. Councillor Toomey, please turn off your mic, turn your microphone on.
Can we hear you, Chair?
I can't hear you now, thank you.
Thank you. And as I was saying before, the microphone muted. The interest in councillor Marks's portfolio continue, as my question is for her. Councillor Marks, the Shriner administration has now announced the reopening of council's assets, including dog parks. Can you please provide an overview of when we can expect other parks and barbecues to open?
Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Chair, and I thank councillor Toomey for the question. It certainly is an interesting time to be in this portfolio. And I'm absolutely delighted to provide the chamber and our residents with an important update on the reopening of our range of council outdoor recreation facilities and equipment from this Saturday. Now, I know that the health direction was Friday, and a lot of people are saying Friday, but people have to remember it was actually Friday midnight. So we're making sure that everything is ready to go from Saturday morning. The residents will once again be able to make use of the council's playgrounds, outdoor gyms and barbecues, including council's basketball courts and tennis courts. And it goes without saying that in reopening these facilities to the public, council is acting in accordance with the official health advice provided by both the Australian Government and Queensland Health. Now, the general health advice, including social distancing measures, continue to remain. And they will apply to the use of all council facilities and equipment. And I would suggest that those rules will apply for us for some months to come, as the situation just evolves as to how it will be for going forward. And I'm sure the chamber will be aware the opening of additional facilities comes just a week after council reopen the gates to our very popular fenced dog parks. Dogs are cherished member of many Brisbane households, and I was pleased to join the Lord Mayor and councillor Howard last week in officially reopening our 131 fenced-off leashed areas since their closure on the 30th of March. And I'm pleased to hear reports that Brisbane residents are making use of these parks while continuing to adhere to the safe social distancing practices. With the opening of yet more facilities and equipment this weekend, I encourage all residents to take these additional opportunities to exercise and socialise in a COVID-safe way. With more people anticipated to start moving around the city in light of the easing of government restrictions, I would remind residents of the safe social distancing measures in place to help protect the community, especially while staying active and healthy. And I join the Lord Mayor in applauding the vast majority of members of our community in doing the right thing and following the health advice. Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Griffiths.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. My question is to the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee Chairman, councillor Cunningham. The annual operational plan progress report for March 2020 states that upgrades for three parks, Frinney Street Park in Rockleigh, Decker Park at Brighton and Nudgee Beach Reserve, have been delayed because play equipment has not arrived from Europe. Given the council's much-vaulted buy local programme and the broad availability of playground equipment on the domestic market, can you explain to ratepayers why they buy equipment from Europe?
Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks councillor Griffiths for the question. Now, certainly, I wasn't the Chair at the time that they were ordered, but I am happy to have a look into that for you councillor Griffiths. I understand that Asset Services makes the order for the play equipment, and so you would probably technically need to direct that question to that Chair. However, I'm happy to look into it and provide some information.
Further questions? Councillor Wood.
My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor McGlocklin. Councillor McGlocklin, can you please provide an update on the progress of major infrastructure projects across the city and how council is continuing to achieve significant project milestones throughout this pandemic?
Councillor McGlocklin.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to councillor Atwood for the question. I'm very pleased to have the opportunity to update the chamber on some of our major infrastructure projects and recent milestones that have been achieved even during the pandemic shutdown. First up, I'd like to provide an important update regarding parking across our city. As you'll be aware, council switched off approximately 1,000 parking metres controlling nearly 8,000-metre spaces between the 26th and the 28th of March to support Brisbane residents during the height of the pandemic period. The fee for parking in council's car parks, King George Square and Wickham Terrace, was also temporarily reduced to a $5 flat rate. With the federal and state governments' roadmaps to easing restrictions announced last week, some parking changes will come into effect next week in line with this plan. Stage one of the economic recovery from the COVID-19 shutdown will allow gatherings of up to 10 people, meaning our retail and dining venues will be aiming to increase their trade, subject to compatibility with those COVID-19 rules. As the Lord Mayor has announced briefly earlier, we'll be back in business as usual with parking fees from next Monday. Parking metres will be switched back on from Monday the 18th of May, and charges will apply. Parking charges will also resume for King George Square and Wickham Terrace car parks. Parking compliance for on-street parking, not regulated by parking metres, will also be back in effect from Monday the 18th of May. Retailers, cafes, restaurants and other businesses will be starting to try and get customers through their doors, and they rely on the turnover of parking spaces outside or near their businesses. Those parking spaces that have been used by commuters and employees who normally catch public transport to work have been beneficial up to this point. The point now is to resume business as usual as quickly as possible. While restrictions are starting to ease, there are still many rules in place aimed at stopping the spread of COVID-19, but the important infrastructure works are by no means slowing down or stopping. In fact, we are powering ahead with projects and even finding ways they can be accelerated during this time. The Murphy and Ellison intersection upgraded G-bahn was officially completed in the shutdown period. This intersection was previously a roundabout that was prone to accidents and increasing congestion. And thanks to the excellent design work from the City Projects Office, this intersection is now fully signalised. As part of the project, council also made improvements to the Kitty Hawk Drive intersection, constructed on-road cycling lanes in both directions along Murphy and Ellison roads, and improved access for streets in the vicinity. A significant project that will truly get northside residents home quicker and safer. Another milestone, Mr Chair, in April was the completion of the Winham Road Stage One. This project widened Litten Road from four to six lanes between Latrobe Street and Canning Bridge in East Brisbane. As part of this project, Latrobe Street and Canning Bridge in East Brisbane, as part of this project, the Leyd Law Parade intersection was also relocated and signalised to improve safety. Mr Chair, there are plenty of more infrastructure projects underway. In West End, early works have commenced for the Montague Road and Victoria Street intersection upgrade, which will transform the current priority-controlled intersection to a signalised intersection with controlled pedestrian crossings. These works will make a big difference to pedestrians, will be able to cross these roads more safely. Although COVID-19 has presented many challenges, the decreased levels of traffic have enabled construction blitzes, such as recent super-weekend works on the Kingsford Smith Drive upgrade. This involved two weekends of ongoing pavement construction works at the intersection of KSC and Racecourse Road, meaning less night-time works throughout the remainder of the project. Mr Chair, 90% of the project is now complete, and it's on track to be finished in the second half of this year within the contracted budget. Mr Chair, the most recent milestone is the start of construction for the Commercial Road and Doggett Street intersection upgrade in Newstead, which kicked off yesterday. And I'm sure councillor Howard will be pleased with this. The project will provide safety improvements, particularly for pedestrians in this highly commercialised area, and signalised intersection providing signalised pedestrian crossings. Mr Chair, councillors, the infrastructure projects that I've mentioned are important. They employ locals, they employ local contractors, and an important element in making sure we get back to work after the pandemic period. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Councillor McGlocklin, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, in the annual operational plan progress report for consideration by council today, a number of safe school travel programmes have been cancelled, including outside Loretto College Cooperoo, Brackenridge State School, Brackenridge, Warrigal Road, Eight Mile Plains. And these projects, the funding for these projects has been reabsorbed back into the council budget. As you know, Graceville State School and residents of Graceville that are both your constituents and mine, and residents that have contacted you personally, have been pushing since Jane Prentice was the councillor in Tennyson Ward for a refuge in Park Road at the corner of Verney Road East in Graceville. As there are now funds that are available within this programme, will you ensure that residents' requests for a refuge which will provide greater safe travel to a large school to be provided in Graceville?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Johnston for the question. Look, the assumption that there are funds available is not accurate at this point in time. What... There's certainly a lot of things that have happened progressively over the recent months. And the idea that council has money lying around is not the case. And in fact, we're expecting a hit of around $40 million in terms of reduced income into council in this financial year. And obviously, that situation continues to evolve as the picture becomes clearer. But we don't have piles of cash lying around in the way that councillor Johnston has suggested. So...
Is this absorbed within the schedule?
No detentions, please. Allow the Lord Mayor to answer the question.
Where's the money?
No detentions, please.
Projects that may have been scheduled or have been delayed or postponed or deferred in the budget, we're not, like I said, we're not sitting on a pile of cash that can suddenly be spent in the way that councillor Johnston has suggested. But as always, we'll make considerations as we prepare the budget for the next financial year. And I understand councillor Johnston's interest on an ongoing basis in this matter, and we will consider it in preparation for the next budget. Having said that, I have publicly said on a number of occasions that this upcoming financial year... that this upcoming financial year will be one of the toughest that we've seen in a council budget in a long time. And certainly, in the time that I've been a councillor for more than 14 years now, I have never seen tougher financial circumstances for a council budget. And so, not during the GFC, not during the 2011 floods, we are facing significant financial challenges. But my commitment to the people of Brisbane is that we will continue to do everything we can to manage the budget responsibly. And also to keep those projects going, which create jobs and support the local economy, projects that can serve as a stimulus for local business. And I did want to take this opportunity as well to respond.
And get people around.
No, councillor Johnston, please don't interject. Please allow the Lord Mayor to answer the question you've asked. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. That was raised by councillor Griffiths about playground equipment. Interestingly, and councillor Griffiths should be aware of this, there are many local businesses based here in Brisbane and South East Queensland that employ local people, that are owned locally, that also source equipment from a range of different suppliers. And those suppliers may be local or they may be overseas. But the business is local, the staff that work in that business is local. And often it comes down to the desire of the local community or preferences of local councillors to see what type of equipment they would like to see.
Point of order to you councillor Johnston.
Yes, Mr Chairman, relevance. My question was about a refuge in Graceville and expenditure out of the Safe School Travel Fund.
I understand, thank you, Lord Mayor. My view is that, no, sorry, I do have to address the point of order, excuse me. The question was about allocation of funds and whether other funds were available and the shifting of those funds to other projects was the fundamental nature of the question. The Lord Mayor has answered the question on the topic of the economic position of the budget and expenditure. And I will allow him to continue to do so, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I was actually trying to answer two questions in one go. One from councillor Johnston and one from councillor Griffiths as well. So that's an efficiency dividend there, two questions.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order to you councillor Johnston.
Now, the Lord Mayor has just blatantly told you that he's not just answering my question, he's answering someone else's. And, Mr Chairman, under the meeting's local laws, he's required to answer the question I asked and not engage in other debate. So can you please bring him back to explaining to Graceville residents why we can't have a refuge, given all these other projects were cancelled?
Thank you councillor Johnston. I am going to have to ask you, Lord Mayor, to, if I could draw you back to the question around active travel and rather than the earlier question around park equipment.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And certainly I did answer councillor Johnston's question. I said there wasn't money available right now for other upgrades, but that we will consider it, as we always do in the lead-up to the next budget. And I understand her interest in this matter and her advocacy for it. And I acknowledge that. But right now, there is not money available to do that project in the way that councillor Johnston suggested. But obviously, as we prepare the next budget, we'll have a look at that and see what options there are to provide funding for her local community. And certainly I'll be keen to do that, not only for councillor Johnston, but right across the city.
Further questions? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Finance, Administration and Small Business Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, the City of Brisbane Investment Corporation has provided the residents of Brisbane with $131 million in annual dividends since its inception in 2008. Can you please give an update on CBIC's achievements and what the alternative would be under a Labor administration?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Huang for your question. And I know councillor Huang has a keen interest in the administration's strong track record of financial management. And it's certainly something that the community and residents and businesses of Brisbane have enjoyed for years. The City of Brisbane Investment Corporation is Brisbane's future fund and is charged with delivering value for Brisbane City Council and the residents of Brisbane. Since 2008, CBIC has almost doubled its net asset base from $135 million to $268 million. Additionally, CBIC has provided more than $130 million of dividends to council in the last 10 years, an annualized return of approximately 11%, which is a terrific return over the period. It is worth noting that CBIC is similar to the state government's Queensland Investment Corporation. And to put CBIC's returns into perspective, QIC only delivered a return of 6.9% in the 2018-19 financial year, whereas CBIC for the same period delivered a return of 11.2%. So perhaps the Queensland government should be investing with CBIC. Last year, CBIC delivered $20 million in dividends, which is the equivalent of a 2% increase in rates. And so it's a very meaningful contribution to council's finances. These dividends have historically been reinvested into funding frontline services within council. And last year, the Lord Mayor took the initiative and announced a fast-tracking of council's biggest investment in parks and green space, with all CBIC dividends over the next five years to be used to buy, create more parks, sporting fields and green space. This is a direct result of the good economic management of this council team, our foresight to establish the fund in the first place and our vision for a cleaner, greener and more livable Brisbane. CBIC has delivered high-quality community centres for council, including Wyndham Library. And councillor Cumming must be deeply conflicted on this point as he has been happy to criticize CBIC in the past. But his residents really enjoy the facilities and he is happy to take whatever accolades come his way. Chirmside Library is another investment and is at 50% larger than the previous library. It receives great feedback from the users and won a construction award for community service facilities at the Master Builders Housing and Construction Awards in 2017. Now, it must be understood acquisitions and disposals of investments are a function solely at the discretion of CBIC and completely independent of council. They form part of CBIC's investment strategies. And CBIC's investment philosophy is guided by sustainable and ethical approaches to environmental, social and government issues. It also ensures that any investment impacts are positive to both the environment and the community. To date, CBIC's investment decisions have allowed it to deliver consistent dividends and sustainable growth for the shareholder council. Last week, we heard councillor Griffiths rail against the sale of the South Region Business Centre and how this was an asset sale, a somewhat snide and uninformed comment. But as we know, Labor hates letting the truth get in the way of a good story. For your edification, councillor Griffiths, CBIC is an investment business and their role is to provide returns to council. And if that means selling an asset because they are offered a good price, that would be a normal function of an investment business. Councillor Griffiths, it is worth noting that QIC regularly buy and sell assets because that is what investment businesses do. The fact remains that CBIC makes investment decisions independently of council. The sale of the South Region Business Centre will free up funds which can then be further used for additional investments and increase returns to the city. CBIC has demonstrated expertise and works diligently to ensure funds are invested wisely and minimize risk at the same time. It's hard to say how Labor would fund its commitments at the best of times other than replicating state and federal counterparts' pension for increasing overheads and debt. In fact, under Labor, it is likely that CBIC would not exist. So, in summary.
Councillor Allen, your microphone, please. Councillor Allen, your microphone. All right. Further questions? Councillor Shree.
Thanks, Chair. My question is to the mayor. It's become apparent from recent infrastructure projects that although council has a process for offsetting lost trees and planting new trees in nearby areas, there's not a similar framework for offsetting lost green space. So that means that when a new bridge or a new road project or even an expanded community facility has to take away a little bit of public green space in a park, for example, there's no guarantee that that loss of parkland will be compensated with new parkland nearby. So my question is particularly regarding the proposed green bridges, but I'm interested in your commentary more generally. How are you going to ensure that as these new infrastructure projects take away parkland, that there's enough new parkland created in the surrounding precinct to compensate for that lost green space?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Shree for the question. Although I do not accept that the green bridges will take away parkland in any significant way. Certainly, there will be assets built in parkland in certain cases. It may be the footings of the bridge or it may be a landing point. But we're talking about a matter of square meters here. So not any significant loss of parkland. I believe at this point in time, it is something we're happy to continue to look at. But as you know councillor Shree, we are investing in increasing parkland across the city. And so whether it's the Carl Street Park at Beranda that where we bought private property to create new parkland in an area of growth.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you councillor Shree.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but on relevance, my question is not about creating parkland in general to cater for population growth. It's about specifically offsetting lost green space in the area surrounding a new infrastructure project.
Okay, thank you. I'll allow the Lord Mayor to continue. The, I understand the point. I would like to remind the Lord Mayor of the question, but also please continue, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. So, as I was saying, we are committed to increasing parkland across the city and that process continues. So whether it's new parks, like the one I mentioned, whether it's acquisition of bushland to create conservation reserves, we will continue to expand our city's parkland. And that is something that we will do as an administration, regardless of what infrastructure projects come up. When it comes to the green bridges, though, I mean, let's be clear. These are community assets, which I know councillor Shree's residents very strongly support. So we're providing an improved asset. And yes, it may be landing in a park on one or both sides of the river, but it is about increasing accessibility. And, you know, we obviously have to look at the design of those assets to make sure that they are consistent with what the community would want. And if there's opportunity to expand existing parkland, then we can have a look at that as well. But along the West End riverfront is a great example of where, you know, old sections of road, which were often just used for parking or for traffic, have been progressively closed and opened up for the community. And I think people in that part of Brisbane would say that that's been a great outcome. And so there's, you know, through road closures and opening up new facilities, we've been creating a lot of extra usable space for the community through that West End riverside area. And these bridges that we're looking at building from West End to Tuong and from West End to St Lucia will further improve the accessibility in the area. So I would simply say that, you know, to speculate that there's going to be significant loss of parkland, I don't think that is the case. But certainly we'll have a look at that in the design to make sure that we're providing a really improved asset for the community, something that they will benefit from and that they will use and that will increase sustainable forms of travel around our city. And if we can further improve public land and parkland, then that's something we'll look at doing as well because we are committed to continuing to improve and expand our green space and parkland as the population of the city continues to grow. So, you know, we will continue to work on that councillor Shree. And I guess, you know, if you have a look at the situation down at the Karilpa Bridge coming across the river, yes, that bridge landed in an area that was green space. It has some footings there and a ramp access there. I guess the question is, what was that site being used for before? Is it better or worse without the bridge in place? Are we taking away from public access? I know that was a stake-up project and stake-up land. But if these assets are designed effectively, we can really improve the public realm and people's accessibility and create a real asset there. And I don't necessarily see that people will view this as a loss of parkland, but more an improvement in the accessibility of the area and an investment in the area that lifts the area, that supports the needs of local residents in an area. You know, rather than viewing it in a negative way, which is, well, there's a bridge landing in a council park. You know, this is overall well-received by the community. And as councillor Shree would have seen from the initial round of consultation that we did, and as I pointed out before, his residents are very keen to see this infrastructure progressed. They're keen to be involved in the process and they support the construction of these green bridges as well. So it can be a win-win.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Final question. Councillor Owen.
Thank you. My question is to the Chair of Public and Active Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Translink have notified council that the inner northern busway will soon be closed to allow for Cross River Rail construction. Can you please outline the impact this closure will have on Brisbane residents, particularly those commuting to the CBD?
Councillor Murphy.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair, and thanks councillor Owen for the question. I know what an avid follower of the Cross River Rail e-newsletter you are. And when you got that notification, you were right on to this one, as was I. As you know councillor Owen, our city centre right now is the heart of major projects like Cross River Rail. We've got Queens Wharf as well, the new Performing Arts venue, the Neville Bonner Bridge, as well as council's own game-changing public transport project, the Brisbane Metro. We've also got private developments like Dexus's proposal for our city's waterfront that are getting closer to kicking off each and every day. Council's been proactively working with state departments and government agencies like Translink, QUU and QPS to ensure a coordinated approach to all of the major construction activity in our city centre to mitigate the impacts on our network. One of those major projects that council's been working with the state government on, and in particular Cross River Rail and Translink, is Roma Street, the preparation for the demolition of the transit centre. As part of Cross River Rail, the busway there will be put underground, including 650 metres of the inner northern busway. So from tomorrow morning, Wednesday, the 13th of May, the inbound lanes in Roma Street will be closed eastbound between Countess and Herschel Streets to allow for the demolition of the Transit Centre coach ramps, as well as the bus stops to be installed for bus diversion when the inner northern busway closes. Those inbound lanes will then reopen over the weekend from next Monday for 15 weeks or just over three months. The Roma Street Bus Station and the inner northern busway will be closed and all buses will be diverted. As we all know, Roma Street is a major interchange in our city's network for buses, north and south of the river, as well as the rail network. In May last year, Cross River Rail reported that on average, 19,000 people use the Roma Street Bus Station each and every weekday. To allow for Cross River Rail works from next Monday, for 15 weeks at least, buses will be diverted from Roma Street Bus Station. For council, this means 43 routes will be affected inbound and 37 routes outbound. And there's also four district routes that will be impacted. In terms of the impacts on passengers, while the inner northern busway is closed, all bus services will be diverted onto Roma Street between Skew Street and King George Square Busway Station. And services will stop at on-street bus stops. Passengers using those services will now stop on Roma Street. And instead of there being a lead stop, they'll be separated into two or three distinct stops in each direction. Currently, passengers travelling through the Roma Street Busway Station can access real-time information. But from next Monday, real-time information will not be provided at the on-street stops. Instead, information will be on Blades. To help with traffic flow and bus movements due to the closure, bus lanes will be added on Roma Street in both directions. More time will be allocated to the signals at the portal near the King George Square entrance. And signals along Roma Street will also be retimed. While traffic on our roads is still quite low due to COVID-19, the additional time to council's running schedule is expected to be able to be managed within our contract. However, as restrictions continue to ease and students return to school, council will be monitoring the impacts to our network. Under normal traffic conditions. Under normal traffic conditions, 2,300 trips per weekday would have required additional running time due to the works and diversion affecting passengers right across our bus network. Under normal conditions, the diversions would add up to seven minutes for most services, with some trips estimated to see increases in running times of between nine and 11 minutes. Now, whilst this is a state government project that is causing the closure, council will be monitoring bus diversion and will continue to work with the government and Translink, particularly as traffic continues to increase on our roads and the network picks up again. Council's also been working with the state government and the Cross River Rail team to ensure that the new Roma Street Bus Station includes capacity for Brisbane Metro. The Turn Up and Go Brisbane Metro will connect 18 stations between Eight Mile Plains and Roma Street, with peak services running every three minutes and off-peak every five minutes. Council is focused on investing in a project that is going to continue to revolutionise our city's transport network, working with Cross River Rail. We're very sorry that there will be an impact to our customers during these disruptions. But we assure Brisbane commuters that this is a bit of short-term pain for long-term gain when both projects come to fruition. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you councillors. That concludes our question time. Councillors, I draw to your attention item four, the consideration of committee, oh, excuse me, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. I just have a point of order. I'd just like to move the suspension of standing orders to enable me to move an urgency motion. I understand there is a procedure to send this through. Do you want me to do that first or after I read that out?
Would you please read it first, then email it through?
Thanks. So I move suspension of standing orders to enable me to move the following urgency motion. That Brisbane City Council urgently develop a mobility plan to ensure Brisbane residents have access to safe pedestrian and cycling facilities as COVID-19 restrictions are eased.
Seconded.
I have an urgency motion on the topic of mobility leave that's being distributed.
So just Chair, that's to councillor and committees at brisbane.qld.gov.au?
I believe so. Yes, it is. Yeah.
I'll send that right now.
And that will be distributed from that email to all councillors. All right. So apologies, just bear with us just ever so slightly to make sure this works. That's been distributed now and I will commence your three minutes of urgency. So the urgency motion moved by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Cook. Councillor Cassidy, please limit your comments to why the matter is urgent, why it must be done with at the moment. Three minutes.
Thanks very much, Chair. I think this issue is very urgent because we haven't seen from this council here in Brisbane, the kind of leadership that we've seen in cities around the world, whether they be, and around Australia for that matter, whether they be small towns and cities here in Australia and in countries around the world, or large cities like London, or large sister cities of Brisbane like Auckland. We've seen them take swift action to not only deal with moving people during the COVID-19 global pandemic, but also develop plans to move people as we emerge from the COVID-19 global pandemic. What we've seen during this pandemic is more and more Brisbane residents are taking up cycling and walking in increasing numbers. They're voting with their feet. They're taking their own initiative as a community to change the way in which our city operates and our city moves. But we haven't seen this administration and this council take the action and show the leadership of a civic organisation in meeting the needs of the community going forward. So as we see those restrictions, as has been talked about plenty today, being eased and more people are being encouraged to get out and about. We see council take a reactive, reactive measures in opening up existing council infrastructure to uses of, you know, that we've seen previously. But what we need to do is to open up council infrastructure to new uses, to encourage people to walk and cycle more. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to reorganise our city and reorganise people into how they move around our city. We've seen at a state and national level, the conversations about the response, whether they be economic or social responses to this, to this crisis. This is an opportunity for us to reset. We think this is an opportunity for us to reset the way which this city operates and this city moves. However, to date, we haven't seen that kind of leadership and we think it's incumbent on council. And as we said many weeks ago to the Lord Mayor, we are ready and willing to act in a bipartisan way. And we think establishing a mobility plan to ensure Brisbane residents have good and safe access as we emerge from the COVID-19 crisis to real choices when it comes to actively travel should be, should be a real priority. People are demanding and rightly demanding at the moment that all levels of government work with and for them when they develop their responses to the COVID-19 crisis. And we think this is a, would be a very positive step in working with the community to reorganising the way in which we move as a city.
Thank you. Now I'll now put the resolution on the matter of urgency, or those who believe it is urgent, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
To the contrary, no and raise your hand.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
There's been a division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook. I'll now ring the bells. All right, everybody's here. So we might just send the bells on. That's all right. We're just working on that. Okay, now councillors, all those in favour of urgency, please say aye and hold your hand so it may be clearly seen.
Aye.
Aye.
You almost had your there councillor Murphy.
Yeah, not quite.
Thank you. Please lower your hands. And all those saying no, please say no, raise your hand and hold it there so it may be seen and counted.
No. No.
Mr Chair, the noes have it.
In favour and 20 against.
Chair, you're muted there.
Excuse me, my error. That was the noes have it, 7 to 20. I'll now move to item four on the agenda.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Yes, councillor Johnston.
Yes, Mr Chairman, just on a procedural matter regarding attendance at council. Last week I raised with you the issue of who the seven participants in the meeting.
I recall, I apologize.
And there's only four listed in the minutes. So I'm just wondering what the discrepancy is. They're showing five today. You did say you would get back to us and I have checked the minutes. It doesn't add up.
I believed I was of the understanding that was published. I will, the five individuals are the supporting, supporting clerks and as well as the attending officer and then the streaming service are the five. So three plus one plus one, five. Okay.
Point of order. Thank you, Mr Chairman, but my question related to the seven people attending the meeting last week. So can you offer any clarity on that?
At this point, I can, I cannot, but I am always happy to provide information when it's available to me. So I will ask the clerks to provide further information to me on that, who were the three that were not identified. But always recall that one of them, at the very least, is the service that provides the streaming, because this is on YouTube. So there is an IT service that is viewed as a non-video participant that is doing that as well. Okay, all right. I'll now move to item four, consideration of the committee reports. The Establishment and Coordination Committee, please, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 4th of May, 2020 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 4th of May, 2020 be adopted. Is there any debate? The Lord Mayor.
Yes, thanks, Mr Chair. Before I move on to other matters, I just wanted to respond to that pathetic attempt that we just saw from the opposition in terms of, you know, quite clearly not having an agenda when it comes to building a better Brisbane or improving active, public and active transport. We saw them go into the recent election with no plans whatsoever. And they spent all their time on negative tax. They had an opportunity just a matter of weeks ago to provide an alternative agenda. And councillor Cassidy had the hide to talk about a reactive approach just before. Talk about a reactive approach, the opposition with no ideas and no plans coming up with a motion asking us to develop a plan. Well, news flash councillor Cassidy, we have a plan and we've had a plan for a long time. And that plan includes the biggest investment in public and active transport that the city has ever seen. Transformative projects like Brisbane Metro, which is now underway, transformative projects like new green bridges, record investment in bikeways and active travel.
Not in Tennyson Ward.
No, no, no interjections please, Lord Mayor.
And that's been a big part of our agenda always and will continue to grow and grow. And in fact, with the investment we're planning in new bridges, new green bridges, we will see the biggest investment in walking and cycling infrastructure that any administration has ever made in the city's history. And it's rightly so because we know that a lot of the missing connections are cross-river connections and that will really transform the way people move around. It will reduce car trips on the road. It will create a fitter, healthier and more active community. And as we saw from the business case from the first of the green bridge projects, the Kangaroo Point pedestrian and cycling bridge, it will help reduce up to 82,000 car trips on the road. It has a great return to the city in terms of active travel and traffic congestion and health benefits. So this is our plan and includes things like Move Safe as well. Back in 2018, we initiated the Move Safe programme and there's been a range of improvements continually rolled out in that respect. And so councillor Cassidy, wake up, there is a plan and we've gone way past having plans. We're actually delivering results. And so for you to come in here and suggest that council has to urgently develop a plan, well, we have a plan and we're not reactive like you. We are getting on with the job of improving active transport infrastructure for the city and we will continue to do so. And there's some great things happening, whether it's the simple things like I announced today, which is the pedestrian, the needs for pedestrians to press the button at traffic signals in the CBD. We've removed that during COVID and I announced today that in the CBD, that will continue to be an ongoing fixture of our city going forward to making, making the need for pedestrians in the CBD to press the button to cross the road. Now a thing of the past, so that we're really supporting people's ability and desire to move around the city in that way. And this is one of so many things that we're doing. And we will continue to invest in, you know, reducing traffic congestion by investing in public and active transport infrastructure. It has been a part of our plan for a long time. We have a plan. We will continue to implement that plan. But, you know, councillor Cassidy, if your side wants to develop a plan, that'll be long overdue. You can do that. You can sit down and you can try and find out why you've lost all of those votes to the Greens in the recent election. And maybe that will help you come up with a plan to get back some of those voters that you lost by not having a plan and by having an entirely negative approach in the recent election. In the meantime, we will continue delivering better public and active transport for the city and the upgrades that will really make a difference. And we make no apologies.
Fund the refuges of zebra's in Tennyson Ward.
In those initiatives.
No interjections, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Moving on. So today marks International Nurses' Day and I know that all of us are very grateful for the work that nurses do, not only at the current time, but always, at all times. They provide such a critical role in our community and our healthcare system. And it's an opportunity for us all to say thank you and to recognise the critical work that our nurses do. And, you know, whether it's nurses in Queensland Health, whether it's nurses in private practice and medical centres, even the nurses that work for council, providing our immunisation services, we just want to say thank you. We are Queensland's largest single provider of vaccinations as a council, with more than 50,000 vaccinations performed every year. And in fact, my first ever memory of Brisbane City Council and City Hall was not a positive one. It's when my mother brought me here into City Hall to get a needle when I was a baby. And, but I am thankful that she did that. I am no anti-vaxxer. I appreciate the role that our nurses perform and today we all say thank you. I know there will be a number of assets lit up across the city in blue, including some state government assets as well. And so please take the opportunity to say thank you to our nurses. Just also wanted to give you an update on the bushfire rates appeal that we announced last year during that horrible bushfire season. We reactivated the opportunity for people to donate their $15 quarterly rates discount to the Lord Mayor's charitable trust, which would then in turn work to provide support to charities and organisations in need from the bushfire crisis that we had earlier in the year and late last year. And so far, we've seen more than $56,000 donated by thousands of Brisbane ratepayers. And I think that's a good outcome, given the tough economic situation that we're in at the moment. In this type of situation, when it comes to people's, you know, home budgets and the bills that they pay, we know that every dollar counts. And so for people to give generously in that way, it's entirely optional. And I want to thank them for doing that by donating more than 56,000 to date. And the number continues to increase each day. As we always do, we'll be lighting up council assets this week in support of important community causes and educational campaigns. And today, we had a booking for the Victoria Bridge and the Story Bridge to be lit up in teal for Food Allergy Awareness Month. And Australia has one of the highest rates of allergies in the world. And as part of Food Allergy Awareness Month, the Awareness Group Trigger, want to encourage people to learn about food allergies in particular. Tomorrow, sorry, the, we'll also see the Victoria Bridge and Story Bridge is lit up in purple and blue to recognise Fibromyalgia International Awareness Day. And there are estimated to be 250,000 people in Australia suffering from ME or CFS, including 24,000 in Brisbane. Wednesday will shine a light on Bladder Cancer Awareness Month with the Victoria Bridge and Story Bridges lit up in blue, purple and yellow. And the Queensland Bladder Cancer Initiative is a collaborative group led by the Queensland University of Technology, working to raise awareness of this often forgotten form of cancer. May also marks Lung Health Awareness Month. And we're raising the awareness of this particular form of cancer. Sorry, this particular important organ in the body, sorry. And the importance of lung health and also the symptoms of lung disease, which can be many. Lung disease affects approximately seven million Australians as the second leading cause of death in the country. And to show our support, the Victoria and Story Bridges, along with the Tropical Dome at Mount Cootha, will be lit up in green as well. The items in front of us today, item A, which is the Contracts and Tendering Report. The items in front of us today, item A, which is the Contracts and Tendering Report, which outlines all of the significant contracts awarded in the month of February, 2020. As councillors would recall, a lot has happened since February, but the work of council continues and important projects and investment in contracts continues, including some important work on the North West Transport Corridor Business Case Technical Services Commission.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Thank you. Can I get an extension of time?
Oh. Point of order?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, move for an extension.
Move an extension of time, Deputy Mayor, and seconded by councillor Hutton. All those in favour to say aye? Raise your hands.
Aye.
And those against no? The ayes have it, Lord Mayor, ten minutes. Lord Mayor, your microphone, could you just, your microphone's not working there.
Okay, here we go. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, excellent, okay. I did want to take this opportunity to talk about the North West Transport Corridor Business Case, which is some important long-term planning work that council has taken a leadership role in, simply because the state government, who is in fact responsible, has not done anything for decades. We've seen some very old lines on a map in some state government's plans, which in some cases date back to the nineteen sixties. Obviously, we live in a different time, a different era, and our transport needs and needs of our city and our population are different now. And so we're taking the opportunity to take a leadership role in developing a new plan for the northwestern suburbs of the city. Unfortunately, we saw some people in the Labor Party take a very opportunistic view where they tried to use this as a political issue in the election, shame on them. We're doing the work that the Labor State Government won't do, we're making the investment and taking the leadership role that the Labor State Government won't take because they prefer to sit on their hands. But what we are looking at is how we can improve transport and infrastructure across all the different modes of travel and what might be some, you know, really effective project proposals to come out of this. What are the ways that we can, as a city, put forward solutions that will help the residents of the northwestern suburbs of Brisbane? We know they have been neglected by state governments for many, many decades and we'd like to see an input to that. So we're teaming up with the federal government, with the support of people like Peter Dutton, Trevor Evans, Luke Howarth, putting in towards some funding so that we can do this work and come up with a plan that will see us push forward and identify good projects to service those people in the northwestern suburbs that have been neglected by the state government. I know you, Mr. Chair, are very passionate about it, as are many of our councillors in this chamber, and we'd like to see some great outcomes come out of that work. But the first stage is obviously to do work on the business case and to do some technical work to inform our discussions and our planning going forward. Community consultation will be a big part of this. And personally, I'd like to see, for example, options like how do we extend public and active transport out further to the northwestern suburbs? How do we deal with some of those major bottlenecks where people are coming not only from the northwestern suburbs of Brisbane city itself, but also from other council areas, in particular to the Moreton Bay Regional Council residents who each day come through Brisbane and add to traffic congestion? So we'd like to look at options to progress projects that will help deal with some of those issues. So I commend this particular investment of money with ARUP. And we know that ARUP is a highly respected engineering and planning firm and I'm looking forward to seeing some of the outcomes of their technical work. Moving forward, in the, in the Contracts and Tendering Report, item six is solar on bus depots. Once again, something that I am very proud to see happening, where we use our council facilities and indeed the big rooftops of those bus garages to generate clean, green power that we use not only for our own purposes, but, you know, to help reduce our carbon emissions and, and reduce our electricity costs. So it's a great outcome and one of many council facilities that has solar panels installed. Moving forward, there's the supply of playground equipment in Guyatt Park, which will add to the investment in our parkland that we're making and a range of other projects which I won't touch on now. But moving to item B, we have the annual operations plan and progress report for the March quarter coming through today. This quarterly report will look quite different to what everyone in this chamber is used to, as this report does not include the quarterly financial report. Under the City of Brisbane Regulation, Section 166, council is required to provide an update to council no later than every three months on the annual operational plan progress. Early this year, we had to bring forward the December 2019 Annual Plan Progress Update due to the upcoming caretaker period. This bring forward of the presentation, obviously impacted on the timeframe, the three-month timeframe, and we've been in caretaker period for quite some time as well in recent times. And so the usual timeframes have been altered, which meant the three-month deadline for the March 2020 Annual Operational Plan Update is due no later than today. And so this is the last possible date that it can come through to council and we've been delayed significantly as a result of the caretaker period. So council will report, will present this report with the quarterly financials again in a couple of weeks' time, which will be a more fulsome provision, including the financial reports. So I'm just flagging that that will be coming within a matter of weeks so that everyone can see the information that they would usually see in this type of report. And I look forward to being able to present that report in coming weeks' time. So not only have we been affected by the caretaker period, but we also saw a peak of restrictions when it comes to COVID and the ability of our council officers to be in the office and work in a normal manner has been impacted as well. And that has impacted on not only things like financial reports, but also a number of projects that have been delayed as a result of the new work environments with restrictions. So we, we will see that impact of COVID and also the caretaker period flow through in terms of this report and in the financial statements that you will receive in the coming weeks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
First, further speakers councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. It's good, good to be back in council and for our second week here because sometimes you forget what people are really like and I've forgotten how petty and negative and nasty this Lord Mayor can be, Chair, sometimes. But talking to the two items on the E and C report here, starting with Contracts and Tendering, this is the second week we've had lots of contracts come through council. And while the Lord Mayor gave a very small amount of detail on a couple of these contracts, I think, given that we are talking about nineteen contracts to fifty different companies telling up to over thirty-three million dollars worth of ratepayers' money, it is important that the ratepayers of Brisbane get an overview of what their money is being spent on. They demand transparency about what council spends their money on and they should be given transparency about what council spends their money on. And they have no access to understand what is in these documents, other than what comes through council. So if they're tuning in here today, they would expect to get an explanation on some of these things. So when you look through the, the report, Chair, as all these councillors on this Zoom meeting would have, there is very little information that is contained in here as to how this thirty-three million dollars worth of ratepayers' money is being spent. So I took the time to go up to level twenty-three of Brisbane Square and look at the files that came to this council meeting. I'm not sure how many other councillors do that regularly. And people would be surprised, and I'm sure some councillors would be surprised to find out that there is absolutely nothing in the files that accompany these papers that come to this council meeting. So when you go up to the CEO's office and inspect those files, all that is contained is the same documents that is presented to this council here. So given their significant amounts of money, I have a series of questions that I'll pose to the Lord Mayor and to chairs, and I'm sure they'll be able to answer those on behalf of council to the people of Brisbane. So questions like, did Civic Cabinet seek assurance that these projects won't be delayed by supply chain issues due to COVID-19 impacts? Contract one's a hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and seventy for layout events for the management of waste minimisation at festivals. What are the details of these events they're being contracted to deliver? Where are these events going to be held? Have there been any impacts on the delivery due to COVID-19? We heard a little bit about the North West Transport Business Case from the Lord Mayor. What exactly is going to be examined for the three-point-five million dollars that he spoke about to ARUP? There's three hundred thousand dollars to various companies for independent assurance review services. No details on that. What projects will these businesses provide assurance reviews on and who will they report to? And will these reports be publicly available? Contract four is over seven hundred thousand dollars for water main relocation at Wyndham Road and Norman Avenue, Norman Park. What is involved in this project? Contract five is one point four million dollars for landfill gas flaring and gas field management at closed landfill sites. This is a very important project. What closed landfill sites will be affected and how are these gases being managed? The Lord Mayor mentioned contract six, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for solar on bus depots. Which bus depots is going to, are included? How many panels? How much energy is expected to be generated? What is the aim for these? Is it cost savings purely or is it to achieve council's carbon neutral goals? Contract seven is half a million dollars for a large mobile scalping screen. Is this an additional scalping screen or to replace an existing one? How will it be used? Is it part of a particular project or for ongoing council work? Contract eight, nearly one point five million dollars for the early works on the intersection upgrade of Montague and Victoria Streets. What work will be done at this stage works? Does this include the removal of the fig trees at this location, given there have been concerns raised by the local community there? Contract nine, nearly three hundred grand for two electric footpath sweepers, similar to previous contracts. Are these additional or new ones? This is a significant amount of public money on two footpath sweepers. So will these just be in inner-city locations or out in the suburbs as well? Contract eleven, the Lord Mayor mentioned Riot Park. What will be done for the two hundred and eighty thousand dollars? Are we confident supplier won't be impacted by supply chain issues as other playground upgrades have been? Contract twelve, over three point two million dollars to scrutinise the building of the Brisbane Metro vehicles, aka the banana buses. We know the costs have already doubled on these vehicles before one of these vehicles has even been built. What is being, what is being done to make sure these vehicles will progress and what reports will be delivered to council on this three-point-two million dollar expenditure? Contract thirteen, over four hundred thousand dollars to replace the Gresham Street Bridge gas relocation works. What exactly is being done there? What is the scope of the works and how will that impact on that project? Contract fourteen, nearly one million dollars for a development alerts system. Your blueprint for Brisbane document released in June 2018 promised an alert system within eighteen months, so residents will be able to stay up to date with developments. It is now nearly two years on from this and we are still waiting. We can only surmise that this might be part of that project, but given there is no other information here, an explanation on that one would be great. Contract fifteen, nearly four hundred thousand dollars to the federal government for twelve months' worth of work hosting council's corporate website. What service does that exactly include? There was no tender for this service, so were private operators considered for this? It was only the federal government system included in this contract. Contract sixteen, five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars for a booking, ticketing, an online payment system. What will this system deliver to the people of Brisbane? What and what protections are proposed for people using this online booking system? Contract seventeen, over three hundred thousand dollars for integration platform as a service, services. I think everyone would probably want to know what that one means. Integration platform as a service, services, again. Contract eighteen, provision of property valuation consultancy and professional services. What exactly is going to be delivered as part of those? And contract nineteen, this single contract alone represents almost half of the thirty-three million dollars in ratepayers' money in these contracts before us today. Nearly fourteen and a half million dollars has been set aside to move SAP software to a cloud-based system. What exactly is being delivered for this fourteen point five million dollars? We know this administration's track record when it comes to IT systems. So what assurances are in place that this will not be running over budget and we won't be, won't result in terrible legal spats? So there's some questions that can't be answered when you call the file up in the CEO's office, Lord Mayor, through you, Mr. Chair, that I think when it comes to this amount of money, people deserve a bit of explanation. Now, on the annual operational plan progress report for the period ending March 2020, I assume the, a lot of these projects that we're seeing here delayed are just going to be re-announced in the mayor's upcoming budget and will be somehow packaged up as a response to the COVID, the COVID crisis as new projects. But we can see here, there's a whole heap of these which are not going to be new projects, which are delayed projects. When it comes to safe school travel infrastructure, we know that the Lord Mayor can find four million dollars to advertise himself in the lead-up to an election. We can't find enough money to keep kids safe. When you look at a, a school travel, safe school travel initiative right near my ward in councillor Landers Ward at Brackenridge State School, we see that the construction estimates exceeded available funding and now being planned for 2020, 2021, subject to funding availability. Or in fact, keep anyone safe. When you look at city safe, project delays as a result of revised delivery schedule, with now construction being delayed another year on that project. When it comes to boardwalk rehabilitation, we assumed that Lord Mayor couldn't find any decking material in Australia. I would be willing to wager it probably comes from China. Cultural Centre Riverwalk project is delayed due to procurement of decking materials. It didn't, it was that hard to find decking materials here in Australia, so that now has been pushed out to June 2021. The much-vaunted Green Future Fund that we've heard about from councillor Allen earlier today, we know that that so-called twenty million dollars of money that's coming from CBIC is supposed to be spent on a green fund. We see here that projects that were supposed to be funded by it are now being delayed by a whole year, lighting of dog-off leash areas. And we know the Victoria Park project that was to be funded out of that as well has been delayed. So we can only assume that this money is now being used to plug a serious black hole in this board's budget.
Your time has expired.
I appreciate an extension.
Just, I must put a.
I'd like to move an extension.
Strunk, I'll move an extension and I need a second.
I'll second that.
Councillor Griffiths, all those in favour, say aye?
Aye.
The contrary, no? The ayes have it, please continue, ten minutes.
Thanks, Chair. I won't take the whole ten. People look relieved. In the timing of delivery and upgrading neighbourhood parks, another, another one of these, we know, we know in here, and we heard from councillor Griffiths earlier about this issue, that a series of important neighbourhood parks being upgraded, and one of those is in my ward, Decker Park in Brighton, is now being delayed because this administration's decision to source playground material from overseas. In this case, it is from Europe. There are no other details included in here. And the other ones are at Freney Street Park, Rock Lee and Nudgy Beach Reserve, Nudgy. Now, I know the Decker Park playground pretty well and I know the works that were planned there are nothing particularly special. They are special to the community because they would love to see their local park upgraded, which is one of the most well-used parks along the foreshore of the Sangay-Brighton area. But it's not so special that these playground components couldn't be sourced and used from Australian-made or Brisbane-made or somewhere in Queensland-made equipment. And we're seeing, because of the decision made by this administration, and this isn't due to the community asking for something in particular, or a councillor, you know, my case, asking for something in particular. These are capital-funded projects that, because these, this equipment is being purchased from overseas. from overseas, are now being delayed. These are decisions that this council is making in terms of procurement, that, that this, this Lord Mayor talks big about his bi-local programme, but we're seeing decisions made by him in this programme, is seeing vital community infrastructure let go. When it comes to the green waste recycling service, this is a woeful, woeful result for this administration. If they had actually spent money on ads advertising council services and how to access those council services, and the value of accessing good council services like green waste recycling, instead of stupid ads on TV where you've got a dog with its tongue hanging out of a window, telling people that council is spending money resurfacing a road like that's something new. Council resurfaces roads every day of the week, every week of the year, every year. We might have actually seen a better uptake. But what is, what is being projected here now? Instead of 12,000 households signing up to this service, only 9,000 households are going to be signing up to this service. So, that is a terrible result on this Lord Mayor's watch. And yet again, another story bridge delay. And this is a project on the Story Bridge, ongoing upgrade project that has to be done and redone and redone because of this, the, the terrible management of this project. I mean, any road that this Lord Mayor gets near, we know gets delayed and we know there are cost blowouts here. And this one is on fire safety. So, this work now has been delayed by an entire year. It was a priority repair and we just hope that this isn't going to impact on the safety of users of the Story Bridge. So, on balance, without the, the administration providing adequate information when it comes to how $33 million is being spent of ratepayers' money on these contracts and the terrible management of council's projects and budget, we won't be supporting these two items.
Further speakers?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair.
Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I wish to speak on items A and B very briefly. Item A was the event management of the Waste Minimisation Festivals 2020 to 2022. As it states here in the paperwork, Loud Events were awarded the contract in February 2020 to assist in the delivery of the waste minimisation events. They've achieved the highest value for money at 77.10. And the first of these events that they were contracted to do was actually, was to be held in May, on May 22, 2020, and would have been focused on the Love Food Hate Waste Campaign. Obviously, unfortunately, due to COVID-19, this event is now being postponed and with no further date identified for the delivery. In addition to this event, Loud were also contracted to deliver the Revive Secondhand Festival, Fashion Festival, which, as we all know, is one of the most popular festival events that we have. That's scheduled for 23rd of August 2020. We haven't, that event hasn't been cancelled at this stage, but they are looking at maybe potentially postponing it till November 2020 in light of the impact of the COVID-19. So, these are the sort of things that are going to continue to happen for some months to come. I would suggest events, as we all know, as even as local councillors, we've had money put aside for different groups to hold different events and because of circumstances well beyond our control, we've either postponed or cancelled. In these two cases, they've postponed, so I look forward to those events being carried out when we're able to. The item B, I mentioned the partnering for safer schools. I just want to talk about that one very briefly. Warrigal Road, Eight Mile Plains, the construction of projects on hold following consultation. This, as always, is all in the timing. This is a project that was originally in councillor Huang's Ward with Warrigal Road being one of his schools. It came over to me at the redistribution. Obviously, we've been in caretaker mode. There was an issue with a local resident who wasn't particularly happy with how the construction things were going to happen. The school was very keen to have some consultation happening. So, the decision was made, due to the, the timing of it all with the handover, to put the project on hold until we could do some further consultation. So, that's what's happened. Obviously, as the Lord Mayor stated, the, the funding will just be absorbed back into the budget and we all will see that reflected in the budget this year when that comes out. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. And I would like to speak on items A and B. Hopefully, I'll have enough time to cover both of them. I too noted with some interest the extensive number of projects that have been brought through Storrs Board during, I think this is for the month of February, which is, you know, quite interesting. Firstly, can I just say, it's fascinating, isn't it, that the Lord Mayor's prepared to spend $3.5 million plus, because this is just the initial seed funding from council, for the North West Transport Network Business Case, which he said will look at all modes of transport? Because the northwestern suburbs have been neglected. Well, there's another part of Brisbane that's being neglected and that's the south-west, western suburbs of Brisbane. And I don't see any funding coming for those important projects, particularly around transport, whether that's pedestrians, cyclists or vehicles that are needed. And it's really interesting to hear the Lord Mayor talk about how important this is for the city, yet that same investment is not being made in the southwestern suburbs. We can't even get a little refuge to, with funds that aren't going to be expended this year for, for Tennyson Ward in Graceville. So, that's really disappointing. I also noted, I had to look up what a scalping screen was, and it is a big piece of industrial machinery, which I presume is probably related to road construction or something. So, I too would like to know what it's going to be used for, whether it's project-related or whether it's going to form part of our ordinary course of business. I also certainly had concerns about the project verification services for the Brisbane Metro Vehicles. Councils recall at the late last year that the matter was brought to council for one metro vehicle. We approved $7.2 million in expenditure for the one metro vehicle. And today, I guess we're seeing the first tranche of that expenditure, or I don't know if it's related to that or if it's related to something else in addition to the $7.2 million. So, that would be really interesting to clarify from my point of view, I guess, when the Lord Mayor sums up. Is this $3.2 million to check on the construction of the one metro vehicle for $7.2 million? Or is this actually related to construction of the one actual metro vehicle for $7.2 million? Because if not, that's one very electric bus, which will be costing nearly $11 million for council. I took the opportunity in my budget submission, having reflected a lot over this during the election campaign and last year, I've had concerns about metro all the way through. In my view, in the current circumstances, this would present a unique opportunity to revise the scope of this project. Clearly, there are components of it that are vitally important and certainly improving bus facilities underneath, I think we've gone back to going underneath QPAC, and improving connections for the, the transport of buses in and out of the city is very valuable. But whether or not we need to spend, and this is one metro vehicle, remember, and the Lord Mayor, I think he said there's going to be 60 if this goes ahead. They're unproven technology in Australia. We don't know how they're going to work. And I, I think this would be a great chance to revise the scope of the metro project to deliver the essential components of it. You know, because the Lord Mayor's already announced it's blown out by $200 million and it really hasn't even got started yet. And I am extremely concerned that the Lord Mayor will continue to cut essential projects, smaller projects in the city to try and cover the additional costs that's associated with the metro project. So, I urge the Lord Mayor through you, Mr Chairman, to revise the scope of the metro project. There are important, major components of it, and I think it would be a great opportunity just to scale it back a bit. My suggestion in the budget submission was look at ordinary buses running on, running along this line rather than going to the massive expense as proposed. I also had concerns with all of the IT projects, huge expenditure on IT projects that are proposed in, in this. Certainly, you cannot trust the administration about the delivery of IT projects. And then when you go and look at the operational plan, you can see why. Because in there, they're already rolling over, so optimised light, they're rolling it over, there are delays. So, you know, they say, trust us, there's no information, you can't look for any details about these contracts. And yet they're prepared to spend millions and millions of dollars to, you know, on IT projects that we really don't necessarily see how effective they are. It's certainly not technology that we as councillors at the coalface, that we provide a lot of customer services. We still have to manually enter information into our link. It then goes up to one of the regional business centres and then another person manually re-enters the information we put in the computer in our offices into the council system. Because our council office systems are not compatible with council's internal IT systems. Now, that's just for logging a job. Then the problem becomes, how do you check on these things? Well, again, you've still got to ring up your local council offices and get them to look it up, because we also have no access or availability to our local council matters. So, I, I don't see necessarily that there are great customer service outcomes that are being shared by the 27 of us that are at the coalface of how this council undertakes interactions with the public. Certainly with respect to the dysfunctional operational plan, and look, I completely understand that COVID-19 has dramatically impacted on the current environment, but we don't have any details about that. We've not had a briefing from the Lord Mayor, we've not had a briefing from the CEO, the provision of the quarterly reports has been delayed, there's not been even any confidential information provided to us. And that would have been very useful, in my view, in helping formulate our budget submissions and where we could make adjustments or perhaps offer more suggestions about how expenditure could be reduced. But the annual plan, which is for January through to March, so mostly it was business as usual until sort of roughly mid-March. So, for 95% of the quarter that we are discussing today, it was business as usual for council. And the absolute destruction of the way in which this council is going about its ordinary business by the incompetent administration councillors, they're all still there. I know a couple of the new ones who've been appointed to Civic Cabinet, sort of going their Sergeant Schultz routine today. Oh, it's not me, it's not me. They've all been sitting on the back bench, except councillor Hutton and councillor Adaman. They've all been sitting on the back bench, sticking their hands up and voting yea every single time this LNP administration expended money. No, oh, I'm a bit concerned about that. And what do we see here? Brisbane infrastructure is appalling, appalling. There are so many projects that have just been cancelled. And this is in the last quarter, so this is before COVID-19. You know, really simple projects around construction of bikeways and school infrastructure, culverts. You know, it, it just, it's just absolutely phenomenal. Parks, really simple parks projects. You know, and then you, and then you get, you know, the, the sort of delay with just delivering playgrounds and, you know, it's just absolutely shocking. But the worst thing, and I'm putting this on the record briefly, I absolutely am appalled that this council is cutting grass mowing services. There is in this plan today, provision to cut four of the usual cuts out of the council programme for this year in our parks and our road sites. Councillor Marks, I don't know what you are doing. I, in good faith, met with you during the week and yet I rock up to council and you've cut the funding. Not good enough.
Johnston, please refer to councillors in the third person.
Yes, oh, thank you, I've got more time. So, it's just not good enough that this administration is slashing mowing. Mowing in my ward and other wards, the wards I've inherited from Maruka Ward as well, it is shocking. We've got metres-high grass in parks. It is absolutely appalling. And to cut mowing services, which is what is proposed in this budget, is absolutely shocking.
Councillor Johnston, the time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And I would like to speak on item A, contracts and tendering. Unfortunately, councillor Cassidy wasn't interested in contract 14, but I am, and I would like to advise the chamber around the Development I contract that has come out directly from an action in Brisbane's Future Blueprint. So, it came under the engagement and...
Point noted to you, councillor Cassidy.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted. Councillor Adams.
Okay, maybe I missed a quick question on contract 14. It came straight out of engage and power heading 6.2, create an alert system that makes it easier for residents to stay up to date with developments. So, what we see here today is the product selected Development I that has been sourced from a company called All About Expert or AAX. It was a product that was originally created by the Sunshine Coast Regional Council, subsequently licensed by them to a Brisbane firm called All About Expert, as I mentioned, a positive example of local innovation and collaboration with the South East Queensland region. It has got a local office and it uses local resources. But I think the most exciting part about this is this is a system that is going to be easier to use than what we currently have for PD Online that really is becoming a legacy system. So, residents can search for development information on a map, their searches can be saved. Currently, as you know, as local councillors, you have to manually re-enter the search every time you go onto PD Online. The system can send a daily email to people based on their saved searches. Currently, people have to visit the site and redo the search anytime they want to get a catch-up on what's happening. It's also going to work well across multiple platforms, so includes mobile phones and tablets as well. As was indicated in the blueprint, the target was for the project to start within 18 months and we are on target for it to be delivered by the end of this financial year. We are very, very happy. We're working with the local supplier, making sure that we've got a product that fits council's needs. And as I said, with a local supplier and local resources, we think the value for council is good as well. The budget that you see today in the contracts includes all the vendor implementation costs, the vendor licensing costs, the ISB implementation costs, the annual licence fee is comparable to that of PD Online, and we do anticipate lower support costs as well. So, not only are we getting great value for the council, we'll also be able to offer a vastly improved user experience for approximately the same cost. So, I recommend that contract to chambers. Thank you, Storrs Board, for moving forward on this.
The, the misrepresentation, councillor Cassidy, could you please limit your comments to the misrepresentation at hand? Please go ahead.
Yeah, thanks Chair. I certainly did raise questions about contract 14 and noted that the delay in coming up with this solution, and I'm sorry that councillor Adams wasn't listening.
Thank you very much. Your misrepresentation has been executed. Further speakers? Further speakers, councillor Mackay.
Thanks Chair. I wish to speak about item A, specifically about Gaiet Park. As I've mentioned in chambers previously, Gaiet Park has a long and important history in shaping the St Lucia that we know today. Originally, of course, the park site was a creek and over the years, council and others have made embellishments and improvements for the good of Brisbane's citizens. The park is a mecca for local families and students. It includes a bandstand, an outdoor gym, table, tennis table, barbecues, toilet facilities, a city cycle depot, numerous hydration points, pedestrian avenue, large green spaces and a community notice board. More recently, of course, the Gaiet Park Citycat Terminal was rebuilt and launched to great fanfare. It was possibly the hottest day in the history of the city, but the crowds of people who attended the opening enjoyed the rides on the new double-decker Citycat, tours of the facilities and copious amounts of ice cream. And that continues now, Chair, with the development of...
Councillor Mackay, your microphone? Councillor Mackay, your microphone? Your microphone?
Can you hear me now?
I can. Please, please proceed.
No, keep dropping out one moment. I can't hear you. Okay, are we okay now?
Yeah, we lost you just... Yeah, we lost you just after the function for Guyat Park.
All right, thanks, um. Guyat Park has two playgrounds. One fabulous set was launched not too long ago for the older primary age kids and it's very popular. Also popular is what we call the toddler playground. In fact, it's pretty much been loved to death and that is one of the reasons, as part of the budget, that Guyat Park received funding for improvements. The toddler playground will be rebuilt with exciting new elements and importantly shade. What I'm most excited about is the Ninja Warrior Course. Sounds fun, doesn't it Chair? And it will be, but it's more than just fun. You see Chair, St Lucia is and has been for many years, home to an enormous number of university students. Generally young, fitness-loving people for whom typical playgrounds are tantamount to useless. And that's where the Ninja Warrior Course comes in. It is Chair only a sobriquet. Really, it's an outdoor fitness challenge course suitable for ages twelve and up. You may have seen Channel Nine's Australian Ninja Warrior T V show Chair, and it seems local residents did too. When I went to the local community in October last year, the feedback was pretty clear. This is a very good lesson in community consultation practices Chair. I went to the community and asked what they wanted to see in their park. I followed up and I followed through. Clearly, there is a need for activities and fitness facilities for high school ages and up. We know that because that's what the feedback told us. So it's gratifying to know that the community is getting what they want and Guyat Park is getting a Ninja Warrior Course and a new toddler playground. And Chair through you, councillor Cassidy, would be pleased to know that we have chosen A Space to provide the equipment. He may not know Chair, but I'm sure you do, that A Space Equipment is Australian-made and they remain open and are actively checking Covid advice.
Councillor Mackay, we've lost your microphone again. Councillor Mackay. Your microphone.
Honestly, I don't know what's going on with this, happens mostly. I don't know which bit you missed there Chair, so I'll just say that uh, it's gratifying to know that the community is getting what they want. Guyat Park's getting a Ninja Warrior Course and a new toddler playground, considering how popular.
Councillor Mackay, councillor Mackay, we've lost you out, we've lost you. Further speakers. Councillor Toomey.
Thank you Chair, uh, I'd like to speak on item A as well and specifically contract thirteen. And I must admit, uh, listening to the leader of the opposition's opening statements this morning, it's very, very clear that his committee members are definitely not talking to him about what's happening in the infrastructure committee. And that is because one of the topics in this morning's uh, committee presentation was indeed the Gresham Street Bridge. And in that committee presentation, we learnt, uh, the divisional manager communicated to us that the project was uh, on time, it was ahead of schedule and in particular that the project uh, has uh, been, been quite successful in the way that uh, the, the team A P A have uh, used the reduction in traffic on Waterworks Road to achieve the work that they had to do. So specifically, the scope was for to relocate the gas main, uh, which is currently under the Gresham Street Bridge to eighty metres further down Waterworks Road, to go underneath Waterworks Road and connect to an existing main. Yeah, I can, I can see you Chair. I have everything on, but I can't hear you.
Chair, I don't, I don't think anyone can hear you.
I can, I can hear others, I can't hear the Chair.
Okay.
What are we going to do?
I can hear you now Chair.
He might be just talking to himself.
Now we can hear him.
We've lost all of them.
No, well.
We can hear you Chair.
Let's just get back in the chamber.
All right, councillor Toomey, yep, I've got you, please proceed councillor Toomey.
Sure. Uh, so the leader of the opposition, um, if councillor Strunk had informed him, would have learnt that the relocation of the, the gas main from Gresham Street basically has to do with making the demolition of Gresham Street Bridge safe. Uh, in, in the time that the bridge was built, most of the services actually ran under the bridge. This project is about relocating the gas main away from the bridge so that the demolition can happen in a safe way. Um, to council's credit and also A P A, the contractor that's named in the contract papers before us, uh, six, have successfully run that gas main underneath the road and have accommodated uh, local residents' concerns at the same time. Uh, so I'm very much for uh, item thirteen uh, in the contract and tendering documents today and I'd encourage all the other councillors here to uh, give their support behind this contract and tendering item A. Thank you Chair.
Further speakers. Councillor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Um, I'd like to speak briefly to item A before us to address some of the questions that have been raised. Thank you to those who have contributed. Congratulations to councillor Cassidy for finding his way to level twenty-three. Um, and great notes Victoria, well-written. Um, the issues relating to the infrastructure portfolio that were raised by the leader of the opposition, um, I'll just go through briefly and some of these have been addressed very well, particularly the last item, contract thirteen by councillor Toomey. Thank you for those, that excellent note, those excellent uh, notes there, councillor Toomey, so I'll be brief on that one. But uh, contract number two, I'm bearing in mind that these are contracts that were issued during the caretaker period uh, in February. So we're talking about works that are already underway and uh, and uh, commenced during the, the caretaker peo- uh, caretaker period of council. Um, but contract, the second item there, the North West Transport Network Business Case Technical Services Commission. Um, I think everyone will be aware that this funding is coming from the ten million dollar commitment from the federal government. So this is the first item of expenditure under the budget that's been allocated to provide the business case uh, through uh, it's the Australian Government's major project business case fund. So this is a good process that we're going through, a good process that we're going through, uh, contributing to looking at what's required to provide for the North West Transport Network. Uh, and the start of that process is to put up the business case to the federal government through its major project business case fund. So a great process, it's underway and uh, that uh, has commenced. Uh, councillor Cassidy, Cassidy asked about the Winham Road Stage One B water main relocation works. Um, this is a, a water main replacement that's part of the, part of the project. Um, it was a seven hundred and twelve thousand dollar project with Veolia uh, to relocate a water main. Um, it's standard operating procedure in major infrastructure projects to have to relocate infrastructure that's under the ground and that's what this is, uh, the relocation of, of the water main that was required. Um, these, those projects are never easy in themselves. Um, you're quite often dealing with infrastructure that, that is buried in the ground that may not have been uh, located during dial before you dig because of the age of the asset or the condition of the asset or not being in precisely the, the right location according to plans that were laid down many, many, many years ago. But this is one of those elements that's required for that uh, Winham Road work a- and that's underway, the water articulation main uh, relocation. Um, councillor Cassidy asked about the Montague Road and Victoria Street intersection upgrades, the early works. Um, yep, that's a, a project that we're committed to, like all these infrastructure projects to help people get home quicker and safer. Uh, and this is one of those important projects. Uh, traffic data has shown that sixteen thousand vehicles per day travel through this intersection, including some two hundred and seventy cyclists, a- and this is in, an important element of that work, again, relating to the relocation of works in the ground, in this case, um, the Q U U water main and the A P A gas infrastructure. So uh, these works have to be relocated and then Telstra and other telecommunications providers also then have to provide their, or provide what services or works to move their infrastructure. So the, these are the things this administration is getting on with and doing, uh, going through the process, letting the contracts that are required to undertake the work. Uh, there's a focus sometimes by the opposition about the surface condition of the road, what's left at the end of the works. I keep reminding them all the time for all these projects, all the, this is future-proofing our city with major infrastructure works. A lot of it is under the ground, you don't see it when you're just looking at the macadam on the top. Um, contract number thirteen has been well-covered by councillor Toomey. I won't uh, speak anymore to that one. This is again, uh, in that context, a gas relocation work um, being done uh, in conjunction with uh, the replacement of, of an existing bridge crossing Gresham Street at Ashgrove. And again, providing the things that this administration is getting on and doing, allowing and getting people home quicker and safer and providing updated infrastructure that meets the needs of this city in the twenty-first century. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Shree.
Thanks Chair, um, just speaking re- really briefly on item A as well regarding the Montague Road Victoria Street intersection, I'm obviously very pleased that this project is proceeding and I'm grateful to the mayor and to the Chair of Infrastructure for their continued support for this essential inter- intersection upgrade. Um, just for councillor Cassidy's information, that particular intersection doesn't involve removing any fig trees. Uh, you're probably thinking of the much more controversial intersection down at uh, Peel Street and Gray Street in South Brisbane. But um, it is probably worth noting that this Victoria Street intersection upgrade does involve removing a few small trees. And I guess it's worth recognising that even though those trees are being removed, I didn't kick up a big fuss about them because I think the project is essential and, and is in the public interest. And I guess that's a, probably a useful distinction to draw between some of the other projects I've been um, objected to. So it's, it's not that I'm militantly opposed to any removal of trees, but it's simply if I don't think the project stacks up and makes sense, uh, then it's not worth doing it. Um, I will just add though, with this um, intersection upgrade, the, the very high cost of this project and the most recent estimate I've heard is a total of eleven million dollars for this one set of traffic lights. Um, that very high project cost arises in large part because of poor long-term planning and a fa- failure to anticipate the traffic needs along this corridor. And I'm very, very concerned that we're going to see a, a repeat of this entire situation further along the corridor, along Montague Road, in the vicinity of Curilpa Street and, and Rogers Street. And I want to put this on the Lord Mayor's radar very clearly and on the radar of councillor McLaughlin as Chair of Infrastructure and also draw it to the attention of councillor Ryan Murphy as Chair of Public Connected Transport. Because many of the same issues that have arisen at the Victoria Street, Montague Road intersection in terms of close proximity to childcare centre, a major new supermarket and a lot of high-density development as well as a high-frequency bus stop are also present further south along Montague Road, near the um, near the streets I mentioned just before, near Rogers Street, Curilpa Street, um, Raven Street and in fact Ferry Road. That precinct is about to have a large new Woolworths developed as long as, along with several thousand new apartments. Now, this council to date has not identified or allocated any money for intersection upgrades in the vicinity of Ferry Road, Raven Street or Rogers Street. Um, and I anticipate that that's going to cause serious issues with traffic congestion and pedestrian safety in the future. I've um, repeatedly requested that we at least initiate a corridor review for Montague Road and ha- develop a clear plan for how this corridor is going to evolve in the future that includes intersections and um, bike lanes and all the rest. So councillor McLaughlin, through, through the chair to you and also to the, the Lord Mayor. Um, it's just really important that we don't keep the can down the road. I'm pragmatic about the fact that you probably won't have the money to allocate to traffic lights for that intersection in this particular financial year. But it is essential that you start the design work and start the forward planning. Because the, the current plans for Montague Road simply involve widening the entire corridor to two lanes in each direction, which the estimate of, I've had from one engineer and, and another traffic planner is that the widening that corridor would cost approximately two hundred million dollars. That's the council's current plan on the books. So clearly that plan's not going to be feasible and isn't going to have community support. So now is the time to develop a new plan for the Montague Road corridor that considers the intersections that I've mentioned and considers the broader safety issues. Because Lord Mayor, otherwise the, the, you're going to have to spend another eleven million dollars further down the road because you didn't plan ahead for it. Right now, there's still an opportunity around that Ferry Road intersection to set aside additional land, to acquire sites before they're developed and before land values rise so that you have more room to play with. But the current trunk allocations for road infrastructure at that end of Montague Road aren't currently sufficient to enable future intersection works that I predict will be necessary. So my very strong advice and strong request to you is that in this coming fi- financial year budget, you allocate money for a corridor um, study or suburban corridor modernisation or whatever project item you want to allocate the funding other, or under. But you really do need to allocate some money to that entire Montague Road corridor and plan ahead for these intersections. Otherwise, just like with Victoria Street, you're going to have to spend millions of dollars relocating services and um, struggling to find the space for an intersection upgrade when neighbouring sites have already developed. So don't, please do not make um, the same mistakes the council has made with this intersection of Mi- Fo- Montague and Victoria. A lot of residents were flabbergasted when the Aldi shopping centre was approved next to this intersection without the requirement for traffic lights. And um, if at the time traffic lights had been built as part of that Aldi development, it probably would have cost council five hundred to a million dollars. Instead of spending that five hundred thousand to a million dollars back then, um, council neglected to in, include traffic lights, um, kicked the can down the road. And now this council administration is spending eleven million dollars to deliver those lights. So by the same token, right now, developers are building a big new Woolworths and thousands of apartments further along Montague Road near Ferry Road. Um, and it would be much cheaper to plan ahead, allocate space, allocate funding for traffic lights now rather than letting the neighbouring sites develop densely and then finding that you have no room for services and no room to des- redesign the intersection down the track. I hope that makes sense and I hope the mayor will seriously consider this because I'm, I'm not raising this to score political points or anything like that, I'm seriously, simply saying you'll save a lot of money down the track if you allocate a bit of money towards planning and design now. Thanks.
Further speakers. I see no further speakers, the Lord Mayor.
Okay, there we go. Thank you, Mr Chair. Um. Uh, last week, um, councillor Cassidy was quite subdued in the council meeting. Um, and in fact, from memory, he let other councillors lead. Um, other councillors asked questions in question time, uh, he sat back. Uh, and I began to think that uh, he had reflected on his approach as leader of the opposition and maybe was going to take a different approach uh, going forward. I thought maybe he would take a, a leaf out of um, his federal leaders book, Albo. Uh, and after the Labour federal election loss last year, Albo promised policy integrity rather than opposition for opposition's sake. Uh, so I thought maybe uh, we'd see that from the opposition here in council. Um, but today, we saw a complete full double-down of the negative approach uh, that councillor Cassidy has brought to the table from day one as leader of the opposition. Uh, and it is clear that not only has he not changed that approach that he has intended to double down on it a- and be even more negative uh, than ever before. And I think that's disappointing. Uh, there were early signs uh, of positivity. Um, but uh, from what I've seen from councillor Cassidy uh, and the approach, um, we're going to see just more negativity. If you listen to councillor Cassidy uh, on the reports that we see before us, everything's terrible. Everything's terrible. This council's apparently, according to councillor Cassidy, absolutely terrible. Um, the reality is uh, very different to that and I think um, the community want a different approach from the opposition on this sort of approach that talks about a constructive approach uh, and not simply trying to portray everything as terrible, uh, like we've seen from councillor Cassidy. Uh, so I want to thank the um, administration councillors that have uh, spoken um, on the items that we see. Uh, here today, uh, the work of council, uh, continues, but we are in genuinely challenging times financially. Uh, and that does mean changes to a lot of the things that we do. It does mean, um, both now and going forward in the coming months. Uh, and even in the coming years, we will see changes to, uh, what we had hoped to deliver in terms of projects and the timeframes. Uh, it will see changes to, uh, services that we deliver. Uh, and it will see a lot of impacts, uh, when it comes to the current economic situation that Covid has delivered. Uh, and so that is the reality, not just for council, but for every level of government. Um, and, uh, as I said, this is, this is the fact of life that we're dealing with. But the people of Brisbane can have confidence that, that this administration will continue to manage the city's finances responsibly. And we will also continue to leverage every dollar we can to invest in job creating. Infrastructure, infrastructure that supports the growth of our city, uh, and that builds a better Brisbane then. And we will continue to do th- uh, do that and month by month, as the contracts come through. Uh, or as the financial reports come through, uh, we will see that continued investment in the projects that make a difference. Uh, so yes, things are changing. Things will continue to change. Uh, some projects will be delayed. Uh, some projects may have to be cancelled for the time being or deferred. Uh, but we have to keep the budget strong so that we can keep providing the services that Brisbane residents rely on. And invest in as much as possible in building infrastructure. And we have made it the absolute flagship of our, uh, successive LMP administrations that we invest in infrastructure. We build things. Uh, and we know that that has not always been the approach at the council level in the past. Uh, the major projects which council, uh, embarks on. Has now, it's now become seen as quite normal that Brisbane City Council delivers major projects. Uh, but it wasn't always the case. Uh, and we know that under the long administration, uh, of Labour, uh, with Lord Mayor's Jim Sawley and Tim Quinn. That there was only one major project ever delivered, uh, and that was the inner-city bypass. And, um, uh, you know, this administration. Has really upped the ante and its predecessors when it comes to investing in major infrastructure. Uh, and whether it's things like, uh, bridges and tunnels, whether it's major road upgrades or in fact. Uh, the new, uh, Brisbane Metro investment in infrastructure. Things that should be done by the state government but are simply not being done. Uh, we, uh, have stepped up and will continue to step up. Because it's the right thing to do for the people of Brisbane. Uh, so it's easy to criticize various things that we're doing. Uh, it's easier to criticize as the contracts come through. Uh, but we make no apology for investing in the city shaping major infrastructure that will help our city as it grows. Uh, things like Brisbane Metro, I'm, I, I have every, every belief and every confidence. This is a critical project for our city. Uh, and just like Cross River Rail, which we have consistently supported, will change the way that people move around our city. Uh, and I am also proud of the fact that we have announced that we are procuring electric vehicles. Uh, now, yes, uh, this will add cost to the project. There is no doubt that it will add cost to the project. But it is the right long-term decision to make. And I, and I understand one councillor earlier said that we should go back to. Um, ordinary buses, diesel buses, um, and I reject that completely. Uh, I think that a future-proof project, uh, if we want Brisbane Metro to be a future-proof project. And we want Brisbane Metro to continue, uh, to expand into the future and be the way of the future. Uh, then we should invest in, uh, the latest technology of drivetrains. In those trackless trams that we see in Europe. Uh, they are the latest technology and I'm proud that we're going to be the first, uh, city in Australia that sees this. Trackless tram technology coming here. Uh, and yes. Uh, over and above our initial estimates for diesel vehicles, it will cost more. But there will be incredible benefits, uh, with those vehicles being part of Metro. And not only can they carry far more people than standard, uh, ordinary vehicles. But they are, uh, more environmentally sustainable. Uh, and they will deliver a much better, uh, outcome. So just one example where it's easy to, it is easier to criticize and we've heard criticism today. Uh, but, uh, we will continue to invest in city shaping infrastructure. We will continue to build infrastructure. Uh, and, uh, these projects are never easy. They're complex, they're challenging, but we don't shy away from those challenges. We have to press forward. Uh, and continue to make these investments. Uh, and I won't apologize for that. Uh, and I won't apologize for making the decisions that need to be made to keep the, uh, city's budget strong and balanced as well. And so. That includes cutting the cloth to measure and that includes reprioritising certain projects. Uh, so that we can bring forward others or continue to invest in others, then we will do that, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, put the resolution, uh, all those in favour, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
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 And those against, say no and raise your hand.
No.
Division.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy.
Vision.
Vision.
Hi Mum, you there?
Welcome back councillors. During the break I was handed some advice regarding the microphones. ISB have been attempting to troubleshoot the audio issues experienced by councillors and have the following suggestion when audio appears to be dropping out. One, please try not to have your laptop volume set too high if possible. And two, if you're advised that you can't be heard, even if you have not muted yourself, manually turn your audio on and off which is F5 and F6 quickly to resume being heard. Further, if there are any questions with your IT system, the internal ISB service is available to us 24 hours a day, that is on 3407 2700. Thank you councillors, I can explain it again in the future, but I will now call for the City Planning item, councillor Adams.
Thank you Mr Chair. I move that the report of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 5th of May 2020 be adopted. Second one.
If it's been moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by councillor Hammond, that the report of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 5th of May 2020 be adopted, isn't there any debate, the Deputy Mayor?
Thank you Mr Chair. Last week's committee report was around CPED and what city planning and economic development will look like going forward, there are roles and responsibilities for the officers and a little bit of a who's who in the zoo as well. I'd like to draw to the attention of all councillors in the meeting this afternoon that you would have received an email this afternoon from the new manager of development services, Peter Harwood, to your ward officers introducing herself and the team leaders in development services. No? And please use those contact details to either contact Peter if it's a higher level, but there is all.
Councillor Adams, councillor Adams, your microphone.
Yeah, it literally just drops out all of a sudden by itself, sorry. Is that right now Chair?
You do, please proceed. You.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We can all hear each other in the council chamber.
What about now?
I've got it, yes I have.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems, I don't know if anyone else, F8 and F5 seems to activate by themselves even if you're not touching it on your laptop. So as I was saying, Peter Harwood has sent an email around this afternoon to all the ward officers, the details are there if you want to speak to her directly or all of the team managers, north, south, east and west are there as well, as well as Annabelle and Planning Services Manager. So that is where your contacts will be for your local ward offices or for you as councillors for things specific within your ward and within the next week, the team will be out to touch base with you, to have a meeting, to talk about all the development applications within your ward or any of the ones you'd like to raise with them as well, so we can move through this. I think it's important to take note that the building and construction industry is a very important part of us getting back onto the road of recovery and getting Brisbane back on its feet. We need homes and offices built, we need those industries to continue to make sure that we can support people in work and if we can make it a bit easier through the ward offices to work with our applicants and with our town planners within council, I think that will make it easier all round for Brisbane as well. So I look forward to working with all of you on planning for the city and economic development recovery in tandem with councillor Allen as well and I commend the report to the chamber.
Further speakers? Further speakers, councillor Shree.
Sorry, shortcut buttons weren't working. Thanks Chair, speak on this item as well. Just wanted to start by thanking councillor Adams for her proactive approach in emailing out contact details and signalling a willingness to work constructively with other councillors and ward officers about some of these issues that pop up from time to time. I think that's a good sign and it does give me some confidence. I just wanted to, in terms of the report itself and the, I guess the role of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee, wanted to highlight the ongoing concerns about unfinished business relating to the deep planting requirements in new developments. So in the blueprint for Brisbane, this was identified quite some time ago that council would increase deep planting requirements for new developments to 15% of the site area. Obviously the Greens' position is that deep planted requirements should be increased to 20% of the site area, but currently it's only 10%. So the previous law made Graham Quirk made that public commitment quite some time ago now, that in response to the Plan Your Brisbane consultation, council would introduce a minimum requirement of 15% deep planting for all new development and that still hasn't happened. So I consider that a broken promise. I consider that a public commitment that was made well over 18 months ago now that has not yet been fulfilled and I hope councillor Adams will look into expediting that and getting on with that unfinished business because it's been lingering for a long, long time now. A lot of residents were really excited to hear that council was going to require developers to include more trees and more green space in new development and that deep planting requirement minimum is very, very important, but the fact that it still hasn't been introduced, even though so many of the other planning related recommendations have now been introduced, is deeply concerning. So from a policy perspective, it was actually much more complicated and potentially controversial to introduce the new requirements regarding parking in new development. So that was the change that was announced at the same time and in terms of amendments to the city plan and the changes that need to be made and the impact on the commercial viability of development projects, that change to increase the requirements of park of parking in new developments was much more complicated and difficult, yet it happened a lot faster. In contrast, the comparably simple change to increase the percentage requirement of deep planting in new multi-res development projects still hasn't been brought through this chamber, and developers are still being assessed according to the old requirement of 10% deep planting. So I hope that our new chair councillor Adams will be mindful of this and will look into this and ask her officers why this hasn't happened. I'm alleging that it hasn't happened because of pressure from the property industry. I'm not asserting any undue influence or anything, I'm just saying the property industry has been campaigning against this. So even though the people of Brisbane really want more trees included in new developments, it seems that this council has been listening only to the big developers and the property industry and not to the people of Brisbane. So hopefully councillor Adams will be kind enough to look into that and to rectify that issue, because we've been waiting a long, long time for that change now. And it's unreasonable and unacceptable that a commitment that was made by a Lord Mayor who's no longer even active, still hasn't been rectified.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I rise to speak, well, don't rise. I'm, I rise, well, I'm speaking on item A, overview of city planning and economic development. I note with interest a number of issues, you know, in this overview of the committee, and I did hear a bit of it last week as well. There are a couple of things that concern me enormously, and this is probably why I don't think councillor Adams should be the chair of this committee. She was the deputy chair of the planning committee for many years, and under her leadership with councillor Cooper, the horrific City Plan 2014 changes were brought in. And they are still the most diabolical piece of legislation that I've seen come through council in the 12 years that I've been the councillor. And the long-term impacts of that bad policy and bad planning are still being felt right around the city. And I don't think there's a single councillor in there that would not have seen how unhappy residents are about planning matters in many parts of Brisbane. There are a couple of things that I want to raise. Firstly, I don't support City Plan 2014. I don't support a lot of the changes that have been brought in since then as well. You know, there are really poor planning decisions being made right around my ward and elsewhere in the city right now, including failure to protect all pre-1946 and pre-1911 homes. And I've moved multiple motions over the past few years to protect them, because people think they are protected, but they are not. And in my area, because of the forced upzoning to five stories in many parts of the ward, there is no protection for these houses. And all of my suggestions have fallen on deaf ears. So I just flagged that there'll be another four years of me pushing to ensure pre-46 and pre-1911 homes are protected. I also want to make sure that character homes and historic homes are not butchered or demolished, like has been the case under this administration. Fairfield Road, Yorongar, we've got the 1880s home at Cadamba Street that's just sitting there, it's already had a appalling DA approved that would allow it to be raised and smashed about, so it looks like a modern home. The developer has sold the site or is trying to sell the site, so it's not at immediate risk, but it's been neglected, so it's being left there and nothing's happening. And I think that was actually councillor Simmons, who said, no, he wouldn't protect that house either. So it's really shameful the way that the administration is ignoring these important planning issues that are so much concerned to our community. But it was a really interesting comment, I'm not sure if it was this morning or last week, but it was a really, it might have been this morning actually, about village precinct project. And it was fascinating to hear a question and then councillor Adams' response. And it was, oh, we've got all the village precincts projects mapped out for the next four years, well, that's great, so there'll be a question on notice coming about that one. And then two, I'm not sure to which councillor, but it was one of the newer councillors, it was, just send me an email and we'll pop you on the list. And I thought, right, well, that's a bit fascinating, isn't it? Because my community has been petitioning for village precincts projects since they were first announced in the budget. Now, we all recall that gem, don't we? It wasn't, no one was told that there was this whole new programme that was replacing the skips, and it turned out that mainly Ellen P. Ward's got all the money in the first year, and of course, no one gets a say now in what else is happening. But just so councillor Adams is aware, there are decisions of full council supported by you, which recognise that both the Graceville Five Ways and the Annelie Junction Shopping Precinct in Annelie are on the village precincts list. Now, I don't want councillor Adams to go down the route of the Sergeant Schultz behaviour we've seen from other chairman today, and she can't remember and she doesn't, she doesn't know, and she wasn't the chair at the time this came through, she's sitting in E and C, she's making decisions about which projects are funded, she's making decisions about how much money are available as the finance chairman, and what a cracking job she did there. But let me be clear, on the 8th of November, this council approved a consideration of an Annelie Junction Village Precinct project, and on the 14th of November, this council approved consideration of a Graceville Five Ways Village Precinct project. Now, both of these are rundown, neglected neighbourhood shopping precincts in Tennyson Ward, there's quite a few. We've had a good one at Graceville, sure, at Bank Road, but there are shopping precincts that are really, really struggling. And given that, for whatever reason, a footpath that was 200 metres long, council can only build 100 metres of it.
Point of order to you, deputy mayor.
Last week's committee presentation was an overview of officers' responsibility. Councillor Johnston is talking about today's committee report, not relevant to last week's report.
Thank you, deputy mayor. I will ask councillor Johnston to maintain her comments within the category of the report before us, where I will note that item eight does discuss village precincts.
It does.
No, no, thank you, I know that I can read.
Yeah.
So, no, no, please, allow me to speak. It does discuss village precinct projects, and therefore councillor Johnson can discuss them.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate that, Mr Chairman. Page two, dot point number eight, I'm glad the chair is on top of her brief. It just shows all.
Councillor Johnston, your microphone's not working.
So can you hear me?
I can now.
Okay. So there were follow-up questions from the previous meetings, and I think our councillor Cook, but it's very clearly village precincts projects were discussed. So just for the record, I want to put on the public record that our community has been lobbying for two village precincts projects, both at the Graceville Five Ways in Graceville at the corner of Long Street, East Oxley Road and Park Terrace, and at the Annelie Junction Shopping Centre in Ipswich Road. Now, that project becomes even more important because of the fact that this Lord Mayor can't even get half a million dollars in funding the stretch to fund 200 metres of new footpath in Annelie. I mean, my side of the road wasn't being done at all, which was pretty bad, but the fact that, I'd say it's even less than 100 metres of new footpath got built, and it cost $488,000, and you can be sure I'll be following up on that, but that's definitely not councillor Adams. So just for all the new councillors who think it's really easy to get projects, I'll be looking to see which ones get priority over the ones in Tennyson Ward that were strongly supported by residents in my community, and this council supported back in November 2018. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Chair. Just briefly, speaking on this item and specifically about neighbourhood plans and neighbourhood planning, the Sangate District Neighbourhood Plan is mentioned here in the report, and I think most councillors should be well aware of my community's position on the Sangate District Neighbourhood Plan, given I presented a petition, multiple petitions over the last few months, but specifically last week, a petition with thousands of local residents signing that opposing this administration's plans for medium-density development in the Sangate Shopping Village area. The worst part about that proposal was that there was no consultation done on those specific rezoning proposals there and in Deegan, around the Deegan train station, before this was released to the community. So something that has been made loud and clear, and this administration should sit up and listen, is that people don't want to be ignored when it comes to neighbourhood planning. We need to fundamentally change the way in which we engage with communities. I have personally experienced that frustration from my local community, from the perspective of a local councillor, and we see that right across the city. So I think it is incumbent on this administration to start listening to people. They rightly want to have a say about how their communities are being developed, they don't want to see developers given the green light at the expense of local residents. So that is something that we'll be focusing very closely on, particularly for me in the Sangate area.
Further speakers? I see no further speakers, councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I thank the councillors for their contribution. I do note councillor Johnson's enthusiasm, and she did definitely get a bit confused between last committee and this committee, but of course, it is a shame she has resigned her membership of the City Planning Committee, which will be dealing with all of these issues, but obviously is not that important, because she can't be bothered to come. If only she was given a formal role, oh, that's right, she was, and she declined it. Councillor Cassidy, thank you very much. We are going through, putting all together the community consultation from the Sangate Neighbourhood Plan, and as you know, the Lord Mayor has made it very, very clear that he will not be forcing density on anyone who, when we look at those results, will be looking at what the community have actually said, and we will be bringing that back to council to reflect exactly what the residents would like to see in that area as well. Councillor Shree, you talked about the deep planting and unfinished business. It's unfinished business in the fact that it hasn't come to council, it is not something that has been forgotten. I do take offence when you sit there and say, we are listening to our developer mates and not doing what we promised, that is not the case. When we say we're going to do something, it is done. It was 15%, and surprise, surprise, amendment packages take quite a long time.
Councillor Adams? That's her, isn't it?
They both just dropped out again, we're right?
Yep, please continue.
It does not happen overnight to change the Planning Act, they've been through council once, they've gone up to the state for interest check. We have just very recently received the tick of approval for the deep planting, which increases to 15%. That will be coming through in major amendment package L, and in major amendment package E, there is an increase in the dimension of the deep planting required, as you spoke about. We are getting on with making sure we deliver what we heard from the future blueprint, as I said this afternoon as well. Both of these will be coming through to council by the middle of the year, the packages need to be prepared, there's a lot of work to do through BCLP and the strategic planning team to make sure they're right to come to council as well. These amendments do actually have a lot of requirements that need to be changed, as I said, and we need to make sure that they are all ticked off as well. With regards to the City Planning and Economic Development portfolio, it's been a branch in council for many, many years as a single branch. I think Lord Mayor Adrian Shunner has made the right decision in putting strategic planning that is in development services and economic development to come together. They are very symbiotic across council, and I look forward, as I said before, being a proactive chair, that you can get in contact with me or the officers, as you'll see in that email this afternoon, to address concerns that you have. Thank you, Mr Chair.
I will now put the resolution, all those in favour say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and those against say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it. Thank you councillors, we'll now move to the Public and Active Transport Committee, please, councillor Murphy.
Can you hear me Chair?
I can.
Fantastic, some playing up this afternoon. Chair, I move that the report of the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 5th of May 2020, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Murphy, seconded by councillor Owen, the report of the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 5th of May 2020, be adopted, isn't there any debate, councillor Murphy?
Just briefly, Chair, last week, the Public and Active Transport Committee received a presentation on council's response to the COVID-19 pandemic, and some of the steps that we have taken to ensure the safety of our passengers and our staff. The committee heard that from the 18th of March, council commenced a daily sanitisation of council's bus and ferry fleets. So for buses, this involves sanitising all touchpoints, including grab handles, staunts in the backs of seats. For each bus in operation, we're also fogging them daily, as we heard last week. This progress involves atomising a cleaning agent and allowing it to pass through the air conditioning system, as well as treating all soft and hard surfaces. We also heard from the 18th of March, city cats and ferries have been cleaned and sanitised daily by the operator Transdev. The Transdev crew are also regularly sanitising hard surfaces and contact points of the vessel, as well as regularly spraying and wiping down touchpoints and hard surfaces at the ferry terminals themselves. From the 24th of March, the front left passenger seat on all council buses has been taped off for customers as a precautionary measure to help slow the spread of coronavirus. And all passengers have been required to board council buses from the rear passenger door as a precautionary measure to slow down the spread of coronavirus. We're also having them touch on and off with their go-cards on the readers adjacent to the rear doors, rather than going to the front. Of course, mobility impaired passengers are still able to board from the front doors. From the 25th of March, only prepaid fares using go-cards or paper tickets pre-purchased at a station fare machine or other eligible passes have been accepted on council buses, city cats and city ferries, and cash payments are no longer being accepted in line with social distancing measures. And Translink has advised that this measure will remain in place until the 31st of December, unless otherwise advised. So far, Chair, all the evidence from our bus operators out there is that the cashless boarding has been working quite well, and that customer disappointment has been kept to an absolute minimum. So that's really great to see that commuters have been getting on board with cashless boarding, keeping those fair, keeping cash out of our busters, and that the operators have been enjoying the ability to go without handling cash and all the administration that goes along with that well. So it's been a real collaboration between TFB and Translink to make this work, and I want to thank all the officers at the officer level for making that happen. For the long weekend at the start of this month, as restrictions start to be eased by the state government, Transdev have introduced a number of additional measures to encourage social distancing, including having designated areas on vessels for the crew, putting up additional signage and messaging on board about COVID-19, as well as reminding the crew that they have the discretion to restrict passenger numbers on a service to enable social distancing. So if we do see city cats or city ferries that are full to their capacity as calculated by Transdev, we may have to have customers who are refused entry to those city cats and city ferries, but it's important that we maintain social distancing on board those vessels. From the 4th of May, we've also been installing decals on the floors of all our buses, encouraging social distancing, and advise that they're all now in place. But Chair, just in terms of all our staff at TFB, I'd like to acknowledge on behalf of council, my appreciation for their service and their hard work during these extremely challenging times that they're operating under. Just on a couple of other matters that were raised during E and C particularly, councillor Shree raised a matter in question time about green space for infrastructure projects. So I went and I just had a look at some of the green space allocations in, just for example, three infrastructure projects that we've completed relatively recently. So Murphy and Ellison Roads project, this was a road upgrade that was completed in April, April of this year. We delivered three kilometres of on-road bike lanes, 600 metres of additional bike path, and 1.8 kilometres of additional footpath as part of this project. But we also were able to create two pocket parks in Murphy and Ellison Roads, so, and we've purchased 1.9 hectares of bushland through the Bushland Acquisition Programme. So there's a net gain from this road infrastructure project of 16,000 square metres of open space that we've actually added as part of an infrastructure project that we completed. So that's not a net loss, that's an add. Wyndham Road Stage One, this project, which we're all now able to drive on, a successful completed project, and one that I know particularly councillor Cook's residents are enjoying finally being open. This project actually added 300 square metres of parkland, so there was a net gain of parkland in an area that joins Mowbray Park, heritage listed Mowbray Park. So we also planted 350 trees and 20,000 plants as part of that project, so another net So another net gain in parkland. And then a project...
Point of order, councillor Sri.
Just concerned about misinformation because the 300 square metres was not a net gain. It was an additional pocket of park that was added to Mowbray Park, but overall there was a net loss of public green space.
Thank you, I appreciate that. As, these tools are available to you, but I just would prefer a few... I just felt that there was a small litigation of an argument there rather than attempting to make your point. But you are welcome to make those points, but please be brief. Councillor Murphy, could please continue?
Thanks very much, Chair. We also have the Chatsworth Boundary and Samuel Street intersection at Camp Hill, which was completed in December last year. This road carries 31,000 vehicles.
Point of order. Point of order, councillor Cumming.
Yes, thanks. Look, I'm just intrigued. What's this got to do with Public and Active Transport Committee? Sort of... Councillor Murphy's made lovely research, but it relates to Planning Committee.
Please continue, councillor Murphy.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. So that was a net gain.
Sorry, I must address that point of order. Please ensure that your comments are relevant and to the matter at hand.
I'm wrapping up my comments on this topic now anyway. But that was a net gain of 600 square metres of open space. So I just make the point that some of these large public transport and infrastructure projects that we deliver, often we deliver them with an increase in green space and open space for the city as part of the works that we do. We don't like to take away green space wherever it can be avoided. It can't always be avoided, as the Lord Mayor said, sometimes difficult decisions do need to be made. That is part of the process, but in terms of our track record, we're very proud of it. The Labour Party in their time at administration delivered one major road project, which was the inner city bypass. And that cost an enormous amount of parkland. An enormous amount. I think it was 15,000 square metres of parkland in Victoria Park was chopped up as part of that project. None of that was offset. So I think this administration absolutely can stand on its record in terms of open space. Just quickly on metro, I was touched on previously in contracts and tendering. Everything in council's control in respect of metro, building the depot, vehicle procurement, operations and policy development, and intersection upgrades to support the Brisbane metro remain on track. This week, we've started the final of four intersection upgrades that we're delivering to support traffic flow around the cultural centre as part of Brisbane metro. This is the Peel Street, Gray Street and Stanley Place intersection, where there's been much discussion around the fig trees. And we're very hopeful that we may be able to relocate some of those fig trees nearby, which would be a great outcome for the whole community, particularly for some of our key stakeholders in there, the importance of those trees. They've highlighted that to us, and I know councillor Sri and the local member Jackie Trad have been liaising with council over this project. We're also continuing to work collaboratively with Minister Bailey, and I can confirm that last week, the Lord Mayor and I met with him via Zoom to confirm a number of project details, including the concept of operations. So how the metro will work on the busway, you know, all practical aspects of that, and the vehicle specification, so the technical specifications of the metro vehicles. As part of that, we also let him know that council will not be taking delivery of the light tram prototype that we were scheduled to take midway through this year. So as all councillors are aware, Hess and its project partners Volga and ABB are designing and building the electric metro vehicle with zero tailpipe emissions and the state-of-the-art charging infrastructure that ABB will be delivering. To inform the detailed design of that vehicle, council had intended to take delivery of a Swiss version of the light tram, so a pilot vehicle. But as a result of the COVID-19 travel restrictions, we have elected to not take up that option at the moment. I can confirm that that is for a number of reasons. Particularly the customs restrictions to get the vehicle into the country at the moment would have been exceedingly difficult. And it also would have had to have come with a Swiss driver. And with some of the border closures and the restrictions around our borders at the moment, that would have been exceedingly difficult, not only for the vehicle but for the driver as well. So this vehicle is in service, it is known overseas. So we're very confident in the quality of the vehicle. We remain confident that we'll be able to deliver an experience that our customers will love when the first vehicle that council has contracted for arrives into Brisbane next year. So with those few words, Chair, I'll leave it there.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just want to add our thanks to the bus drivers and other transport for Brisbane staff, who, and ferry and city cat operators who have been doing a tough job in extraordinary circumstances, continuing to operate our public transport system here in Brisbane, on road and on river through the COVID global pandemic that we've had. However, we appreciate the words councillor Murphy has thanked all those staff on behalf of the organisation. However, we do think that those bus drivers particularly are owed an apology from councillor Murphy and from the Lord Mayor when council forced bus drivers to ration hand sanitiser in tiny little bottles when this administration was attempting to send hand sanitiser over to China, and that's absolute disgrace.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman, and I too would just like to take the opportunity to thank all the bus drivers and the staff for keeping our city running. I know there's been a big drop-off in patronage from the figures that we've seen over the last few days. And I did have the chance to catch the bus. A couple of weeks ago, I was on the bus, and it was interesting. The 104, which, you know, this administration's liked to cut in previous years, still had quite a few people on it, which was, you know, just shows people still relying on the bus, particularly the elderly, on those local routes that get them to the hospitals and the shops and so forth. So it's good that we've been able to keep it running, and I just want to thank our bus drivers and all of the cleaning staff and support staff who've been able to keep them running so effectively. I listened with great interest to councillor Murphy's explanation of all the additional cleaning that's been going on to keep the council buses hygienic for patronage. And I think that's an excellent thing. I'll just flag now to councillor Marks that I asked a similar question this morning in City Standards about the playgrounds, and I'm hoping she'll be able to give us a detailed response as councillor Murphy in her committee a bit later on. Because I know as we reopen council facilities, you know, the standard we set with keeping our buses clean and hygienic has been an extremely good one. And I certainly would like some information on behalf of the residents I represent about other parts of council so we see a similar high standard being implemented there. Thank you.
Further speakers? I see no further speakers. Councillor Murphy.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just quickly on some of those comments from councillor Cassidy just before. It was almost a nice generous bipartisan display of thanks for our bus operators and all our people working in TFB. But then it sort of descended into a Kristina Keneely style dog whistle on China and some kind of savour rattling with the unions. It was, yeah, it almost came close to being graceful, but we didn't quite get there. So I'm hopeful next week, councillor Cassidy, we might...
Like your juvenile young...
No, no, no introductions.
And... Yeah, that's it, Chair. Nothing more.
I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Then, thank you. And those against, no and raise your hand. The ayes have it. Councillors, the Infrastructure Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 5th of May 2020 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor McLaughlin, seconded by councillor Maddick, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 5th of May 2020 be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor McLaughlin.
Oh, thank you, Mr Chair. An historic meeting, of course, by Zoom. I think we're all getting the hang of Zoom for committee meetings, but I'm certainly looking forward to face-to-face meetings for committees resuming as well. So we can all eyeball each other in appropriately separated space in one of the committee rooms of council. The presentation last week at the beginning of the year, well, following the election, was an overview of the Infrastructure Committee. Most members of the committee are newly on board in that committee. So it was a great opportunity to provide members of the committee with an overview of what's involved in the portfolio and its major component parts, which includes City Projects, the City Projects Office, which is the council's in-house project management and design group, providing for great outcomes in a range of deliverables across the whole of the council programmes. But councillor Murphy just outlined a couple really well in terms of what would have been, or what was a CPO design for the Murphy and Ellison Road intersection upgrade, providing the outcomes, which came from the work of the CPO planners in the first instance. My own experience with great work along the Kingswood Smith Drive, project upgrade, fantastic open spaces come as a consequence and designed in at the very start of the project. So great work that's undertaken by CPO. Was there chatter from the side there somewhere? Yeah. I, we also heard about the work, which I think is one of the principal areas of councillor interest, transport planning and operations, which is responsible for all the works that are done to keep people moving safely and efficiently across the city. And down to projects which we know the councillors place a great store in, like the LED road signs and the SAM signs and requests for traffic coming, which are all managed by CPO. Also within infrastructure, we have the asset management branch, which is responsible for the strategic management of council's assets, including roads, but also including stormwater, buildings, parks, community assets, our ducts and fibre network. So the asset management coordinates, management practices across the city to make sure that our assets are maintained to a high standard and also provides innovative ways to enhance those assets. So those areas will provide more in-depth reports in the course of the year in the committee presentations. And I look forward to hearing those reports. The other work that was undertaken last week in the committee was the consideration of five petitions. If any councillors want to debate any of those, I'd be happy to let them do so and then come back for a response afterwards. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Chairman. Look, it was an interesting presentation last week. I did ask councillor McLaughlin today for a copy of that presentation, haven't received it yet. So hopefully that can be sent through to the office or loaded on to Aquadox. In relation to the work that council does, obviously is a significant opportunity at the moment to look at ways that we could actually potentially enhance employment and enhance what we're doing through, over the city with our infrastructure programme so that we're actually building on the opportunity of creating employment in our city. Hopefully, that's being looked at by the administration and both small and large projects are being considered. Our concern still remains the fact that the infrastructure spend for the city is very much focused on a very large proportion going to the inner city. And that includes the proposal for the four new green bridges, as well as the expense that's currently being undertaken with Kingswood Smith Drive, which incidentally has blown out by a year. And as well as, my understanding is, over $1 billion of the metro money is actually being spent on inner city tunnels for the metro project. And while we're doing those tunnels, we're ignoring actual car parking for people, commuters using the buses who want to access the city. So there seems to be some imbalance in the delivery of this programme. We believe there's much more opportunity for it to be delivered and turned around so that it can actually present better opportunities for the whole city. With that, I draw an example of the South West suburbs, southwestern suburbs of Brisbane. They're the industrial area, the working area of the city. That area has seen very little expenditure on infrastructure funding, and yet it delivers significantly both to the rates and the workforce of the city. And if you look at the future plans, both federally and at state levels, you've got opportunities that will come from the inland rail project being done by the federal and state governments, which will finish in Acacia Ridge. You've got our own planning, which has been undertaken to expand industry in that area significantly. You have the Cross River Rail project coming on board, and you have significant issues with heavy vehicle congestion through that area of the city. So I would like to see, and we would like to see as administration, that this LMP council puts more money into the suburbs, into those areas of the city that have been missing out under the current focus of administration. Just adding to that also, we should take into account that the Ipswich Motorway is being upgraded by the federal and state government. But council still today does not release its plans for its upgrade of Ipswich Road between the Clemseven Tunnel and where the roadworks are being undertaken by the federal and state government. So there are many missed opportunities here, or many delays that I think council needs to respond to in this programme. And that's why infrastructure is so important for what we're doing. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to speak really briefly on item C. That is the petition about the upgrade of the pedestrian, well, the red pavement marking on Oxford Street to a pedestrian crossing. I just want to indicate my support for the recommendation and also my support for Oxford Street to be investigated for a suburban corridor modernisation as part of that programme. Oxford Street is highly patronised by both pedestrians and cyclists, and we do have bus services on that street as well. There are a number of pedestrian crossings, and this red pavement marking has been an issue for some time. There are almost daily near misses. I would ask that this upgrade to that particular pavement marking be prioritised in either the current or next financial year. I think that that can be done separately to the suburban corridor modernisation investigations. I would also support a further reduction of speed on Oxford Street. It is noted that in parts it is 40 kilometres an hour. I would in fact support a further reduction to 30 kilometres an hour. I think that, given the nature of Oxford Street and the usage of Oxford Street, and particularly during the COVID restrictions, we've seen an increase in the walking and cyclists that are using Oxford Street, and I think that's going to continue. We've got Blimber Memorial Park as well on Oxford Street, which is highly patronised ordinarily and increasingly so as well. So I just want to indicate my support for the recommendation, but also that that marking be considered as a priority prior to those other works being undertaken.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I'd just like to speak briefly on item B. The petition requesting council to reduce the speed limit on Chelma Street East, Chelma, to 40 kilometres an hour. Firstly, can I say it's taken a long time for this petition to come forward. And when it was originally sent to me in the first draft, it basically said, no, we're not going to do anything at all. And I pushed back at that stage and said, well, that's not acceptable. The SAM signs which have rotated there over the last couple of years clearly show that there is a problem with volume and speed along Chelma Street East. And residents are very concerned about safety. For those people who know this area, it is an extremely busy precinct. There are major sporting clubs on one side of Chelma Street East, and there is a church, and there are residences. And there are, you know, there's a rail bridge. So it's one of the access points east-west between Onne Avenue and Oxley Road. So it is quite busy. Now, the portable speed... Now, the portable speed sign, the SAM sign, indicates that there is a problem. It's currently 50 kilometres an hour along there, and the SAM shows that about 16% of all vehicles are speeding. There's about 1,700 vehicles a day using the street. The residents, and I think it says in there, 37 residents of Chelma, they were pretty much all in Chelma Street East. Almost every single resident in the street signed the petition and some in the neighbouring street behind. The residents are very supportive of 40 kilometres per hour. I note that where I've made these requests for other streets in my ward, you know, it's been problematic, council's not been willing to act. And recently, Honor Avenue Graceville is a good example of that. It took almost 10 years to get them to reduce the speed along Hyde Road in Yorongah, and we had to petition multiple times for that. So I'd just say that I don't think council is meeting residents' expectations about how traffic can be safely managed in suburban streets. And this street is is more complex because there are only limited ways you can go east-west in Tennyson Ward. We only have a couple of low-rail bridges and an open-level rail crossing. So the streets, the cross streets between Oxley Road and Honor Avenue necessarily carry higher volumes of vehicles. So in my view, it is critical that that is at a safe speed. Now, what we're seeing is 85% of traffic is travelling at 58, up to 58 kilometres an hour. So there's a huge amount of people who are really speeding. And yes, that is a police issue without question, and these results have been sent to the police and the residents certainly have also spoken with the police about doing some enforcement. But the message we need to send here is that the speed limit should be significantly lowered. If it was 40, it will force drivers to slow down. It will make it safer for people heading to church or to AFL or to the personal trainer or the gym or barbecue mafia for dinner. You know, there's any number of, you know, different reasons why people are on foot there. And it's really, really important that we practically look at reducing the speed in some key streets like this to 40 to meet residents' expectations. It won't impact on traffic movements. This is not a long street, it's only a few hundred metres long. So I just want to say that I strongly support the residents' request for 40 kilometres an hour. I was disappointed with the initial response, but I know now that after after pushing back with council that they are prepared to do another survey. The last survey was undertaken four years ago in November 2016. And at that stage, it showed that 85% of vehicles were travelling at 57 kilometres an hour. So there has been an increase as well over that time. It's important that council does do the traffic survey. I note councillor McLaughlin said it to be done when traffic patterns are more normalised, so possibly later in the year. I appreciate that's a sensible approach, given traffic is certainly not at normal levels at the moment. So I just want to place on the record very strongly my support for 40 kilometres an hour on Chelma Street East. I want to encourage council when things are back to normal to put the black tube counter down and to do the survey and to really listen to the residents who live, work and play in this part of Chelma and to make the streets safer for all residents who walk or cycle or drive along Chelma Street East and reduce the speed limit to 40 kilometres an hour. Thank you.
Further speakers? I see now further speakers, councillor McLaughlin.
Oh, thank you, Mr Chair. Look, I'll wrap up thank you to all councillors who participated in that debate, but I must correct the record with what was just said by the councillor for Tennyson Ward about the reason for why this petition took so long to come through. The reason was that when it first came through in February, the last committee meeting before the election, councillor Johnson, having previously indicated her support for the recommendation at the at the committee meeting, declared she was now opposed to that recommendation. And and so it laid on the table.
Point of order.
Excuse me, point of order to you, councillor Johnson.
Yes, claim to be misrepresented.
Councillor Johnson, I went and checked the record on the file about your interactions with the council officers, who noted your.
Councillor McLaughlin, can I insist that you put comments through the chair and refer to councillors by third person, please?
Certainly, Mr Chair, my apologies for that. I did, Mr Chair, check the the file on this particular petition and the responses and noted that councillor Johnson had indicated her support for the recommendations. The recommendations were entirely consistent with the recommendations of officers for other submissions. And as councillor Johnson has just said, this was in the notes from what she had originally said was unacceptable and forced that petition to lay on the table. But as she just noted, the original draft that lay on the table and was passed in our committee last week said that council proposes to undertake a new count early next year, early this year, my apologies, when traffic returns to its usual weekday levels to assess current traffic volumes and speeds on the roads. Well, that was what went through in the petition that we considered in our committee when you were on it, councillor Johnson, through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Johnson on the on the 4th of February, and it's what was passed through our committee now after the election. It's a shame that it had to take this length of time as a consequence of your behaviour in the committee back in February to force that 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 consideration of that petition to lay on the table, but we've got it there. I remind all councillors that the requests that we receive for reductions in speed aren't those of council alone. Those who've been here for a while are aware that requests for reductions in speed have to go to a speed management committee, while council officers are happy to undertake the work that records the speed and volume of traffic on roads. And I agree that it should wait on all these requests until we get back to normal operations. But those, that data has to go to a speed management committee for consideration and response and recommendation, and that involves the Department of Main Roads, Police and Council. So a request for a speed reduction isn't councils alone to make a decision on, although we certainly will participate in the data collection to inform the decisions of the speed management committee. Councillor Griffiths, thank you for your comments on major infrastructure projects. I agree that we should be making sure that the infrastructure in industrial areas of the city is well-maintained. That is one of the drivers of the Kingston Smith Drive upgrade project, which is a crucial element in our city's industrial area for the airport, for Trade Coast Central and for the Port Precinct. So without the KST upgrade, a critical area of our city that provides work and products for the for the workers in our city and for the the output that goes across Queensland and interstate all comes from the Eagle Farm area, a lot comes from the Eagle Farm area, and it relies on the road network. That's why we always refer to Kingston Smith Drive upgrade as a whole of city project. And one of the major drivers is making sure we have the infrastructure necessary to meet the needs of a growing city, particularly the industrial areas of our city. With that, I close my remarks, Mr Chair. Thank you very much.
Councillor Johnson, you had a misrepresentation.
Yes, thank you.
But please, comments of misrepresentation at hand, councillor Johnston.
Yes, in my speech, councillor McLaughlin has misrepresented me. I pushed back on this recommendation when it was first given to me in January because I did not support the recommendation.
Not in your emails.
And I asked for changes to be made. And when it was sent back to me, it had not got the right information in it, and I saw that when it came to committee and asked for it to be changed.
Not recorded.
I will now.
It is, it's in writing.
Please.
Didn't check the file properly, in writing.
Okay, councillors, I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And those and those against, no, and please raise your hand. The ayes have it. I'll now move to the, we will now move to the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Thanks, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 5th of May, 2020 be adopted.
Second.
It's been moved by councillor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Landers, that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 5th of May, 2020, be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Cunningham?
Thanks, Chair. Yes, so last week, Tim Wright, the manager of Natural Environment, Water and Sustainability, attended the meeting to provide an overview presentation of Programme Three, Clean, Green and Sustainable City. And I think it was a great way to start our new committee and to, especially as we have some new committee members. Tim outlined that the programme goal is to ensure Brisbane will be recognised by residents and visitors as a sustainability leader and having an enviable lifestyle with a reputation for being clean, green and sustainable. Environmental sustainability and livability are fundamental in being a resilient city. Through this programme, we ensure Brisbane's open spaces and waterways are accessible and are valued now and for future generations, and that our built form supports a clean, green and sustainable outcomes. We take our role as sustainability leaders seriously, and this is demonstrated through our commitment to carbon neutrality and recognises the combined contribution of many individuals, businesses and community groups who work in partnership for the greener good, helping to protect, restore and sustain our natural environment. We also have two petitions. The first is naming a parcel of land Carter's Rest. This petition received 65 resident signatures, and the Hollum Park Ward has received at least 20 letters of support for the parcel of land to be named Carter's Rest. On note, the councillors Griffiths and Cassidy voted against this naming as they didn't agree with the purchase of the land, and councillor Cassidy queried the amount of consultation and community support for the name Carter's Rest. We are voting today about the naming of the site. The petition received support from dozens of residents who live in close proximity to the land and who came out and helped re-vegetate the site. And this administration will support the wishes of local residents. The second petition is regarding the naming of the park at Winham Road, Winham West, to be named Winham West Leisure Park. The petition had eight signatures in favour of this name. Just one more thing, Chair. I'm happy to confirm that the park upgrade project that councillor Griffiths referred to in question time involves procurement through a locally-based business. As councillors would be aware, the order for playgrounds is placed through asset services. The procurement of playgrounds is entirely consistent with our effort to support businesses in the region who employ local people and contribute to Brisbane and the SEQ community. We need to recognise that we live in a global economy, and there is nothing unusual about a local business that council contracts with who may in turn procure some materials or equipment from an overseas supplier. In this particular case, the councillor is referring to, I understand that due to issues that have arisen as a result of COVID-19, a local contractor has experienced delays in receiving the delivery of equipment from overseas. I'm told that this has resulted in a short delay. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Cumming.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. I support the response to the petition in clause C. This this is an area where the official name of this park is kind of a road park, but there's actually three frontages to of the parkland, the major roads in the area, and it's a very large area of parkland. So the idea is to get this this smaller area, which is used by three great community groups, and call it, give it its own name, and that might attract more people to use the facilities and attract more volunteers to become members of the clubs. The clubs involved are the Bayside BMX Club, the the Live Steamers, which is a group which runs little mini train services round and provides many young children with a great deal of pleasure, and they also have a lot of birthday parties there. And the also the Remote Control Car Club, which has got an excellent track as well at that facility. So the idea is to get, as I said, to get a name for these groups. And with a good sign and publicity for each group, I'm confident that there'll be more use of these facilities and also more members for the club. There were only eight signatures, but this, the land's actually a fair way away from anything else. There's there's some townhouses probably hundreds of metres away, which don't pass by this land and across the road, but set well back off the road is the Brisbane Bayside State College, the local high school in the area, and it's it's well away from these facilities as well. So I support the proposal and look forward to a nice new sign going up in due course.
Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can.
Yeah, great, thank you. Look, it was interesting, the presentation last week. We always get a very glossy presentation on our first presentation back about the wonderful things that council's doing, and councillor Cunningham was very positive about it. I think what what I've learned about this administration is you've got to look a little bit below the surface to actually see what's going on, see the gloss, but then there's another thing about actually what's happening. And even, I'm just going to pick out three examples from the presentation that sort of presented this wonderful view of what we're doing with the environment, but really, we're not actually doing that wonderfully with the environment. And the first one is in relation to carbon credits. Here we are patting ourselves on the back for what we're doing with with carbon and how we're offsetting that. What isn't spoken about is how much money or how much of that is being brought from overseas and in particular China. So even though we have all this need for waterway renewal and all this work that needs to be done locally, even in Brisbane, we're not doing it in Brisbane, we're spending that money overseas to offset that carbon because it's cheaper. And I just think that is one of the ways we're fooling the people of Brisbane. We're not actually really dealing with the people of Brisbane and providing something for our city. Second thing is, we had a discussion about waterways and the great job we're doing with the waterways, and the Oxley Creek Catchment Programme came up. Well, there's a long way to go with these programmes, and I know from the waterways in my area, including Oxley Creek, including Blunder Creek, including Mullabin Creek and Stable Swamp Creek and Rocky Waterholes, these areas aren't seeing any renewal. These areas aren't seeing any treatment or any improvement. They're treated like the drains of the city, almost like the sewers of the city. And if you live in in a nice western suburb, then you you seem to get a lot of profile and preference. But if you are in the industrial areas or the areas that aren't as wealthy, you miss out. And yet the administration won't tell you that. And yet, those same creeks flow the same river that runs through our city that flows to our bay. And the third thing is, and I think it's becoming more and more obvious for me, is the amount of land we're allowing to be cleared. And all you've got to do, if you want to see that, is go out to Polara or Willawong and look at the vast tracts of land being cleared out there. Native forests that's been cleared. So on one hand, we're talking about what wonderful things we're doing tree planting, but then we've allowed all this clearing to happen as well. And so quite an amount of destruction of wildlife in our city. So it's not all glossy, it's not all wonderful, and we need to do a lot of improvements to actually be genuine. And the second thing relates to, my second point relates to the issue of Carter's Rest. And I don't want to, boy, we'll keep going over this. $6.2 million worth of bushland funding to protect land that the LMP allowed to be cleared. Three house blocks was bought for $6.2 million. If I recall rightly, and I haven't got my all the facts with me, I think a developer made an extra $1 million out of that deal. A million dollars, just like that, because this land was controversial in leading up to an election. Well, to be buying bushland like this, to be buying bushland, and I was interested to hear councillor Cunningham say, we will always support residents' requests. I'm going to hold you that to councillor Cunningham, because to date, you haven't done anything about the bushland at Nathan. You didn't do anything about the bushland at Oxley. You haven't done anything.
Councillor Griffiths, can I can I insist that you address your comments to the chair and talk to councillors in third person, please?
Sure, sure, Mr Chair. I will hold the administration to that, because there are so many times you don't meet the needs of the city. You don't listen to residents, you override residents. And I've just given you three examples there. So I actually think this shouldn't be called Carter's Rest. No, no koala died there. No koala was on that land. Councillor Adams, you might want to read it in the report, it doesn't say that. No file says there was any. file says there was any koala on that land, your own council files. We've been through it. So it's interesting. It's really interesting that, yes, six point two million dollars has been spent there. People have got involved in planting up this land and that's very good. Had cactus palms on it before, had tennis court on it before, had three houses on it before. They're very privileged people. They're very privileged people to have councils spend that sort of money in that area when there are whole pockets of bushland across the city that actually have koalas on them, that have wildlife on them, that we're not doing anything to protect. Nothing. Zero. So I think this is more about Carter's con. It is a real con of Brisbane residents, what's gone on here, and it is wrong. And this is not the way we believe bushland money should be spent. Residents deserve better. It should be more transparent, it should be more open for everyone. So no, we won't be supporting the naming of Carter's Rest. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. Just briefly, on item A and item B, yeah, I have to agree with councillor Griffiths and I think he was quite mild giving the way Oxley residents were done over. There's no money for them, but there's six point two million dollars for councillor Adams to save her bacon, which it clearly worked because she scraped back over the line yet again. However, to try and imply that somehow there were koalas on this site and connected to this site when it was in three residential blocks is just such a misnomer. It is not appropriate and it's disappointing to see that the way in which this administration continues to justify purely political decision without any, any environmental evidence to support it at all. And not even, not even their own stakeholders supported it. I mean, the RSPCA came out and had a go at the administration for, verbally, I think is probably the right word there, staff member at a meeting. So it's just shocking what happened on this block of land and I see the administration just attempting to roll over the top of it yet again. Well, I can say that if there's six point whatever two million dollars for councillor Adams' ward, there has to be money for Oxley. There are numerous sites in my ward I've identified for buyback and I certainly won't be letting them go. Just briefly, with respect to item A, there is an outstanding petition in my ward that has not come forward and I'm not sure whether it will sit within Parks, Environment and Sustainability, or it'll sit within Assets Services in City Standards. But it was a petition to expand the BMX skate facility at Chelma and it is in a reserve, so it's not necessarily in a council park. It is most likely going to be Asset Services, but just in case it is sitting with this Parks, Environment and Sustainability Committee, it is a Capital Works project that would happen in a council reserve. I would just ask the committee chair councillor Cunningham to check and bring it forward. I haven't seen any even recommendations, so I'd very much like to see that petition brought forward for my consideration and the local community's consideration as soon as possible. And thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks Chair. I just missed the start of councillor Griffiths' remarks. I'm not sure whether I've heard this or not, but we just want to, item B taken, Serry Adam for voting.
Okay, that hadn't happened, but-
Okay, thank you.
Item B will be taken, Serry Adam for voting.
Yes, thanks.
Was that, was that all?
Yes, thank you.
That's it, okay. Further speakers? Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise as it is to speak to item B here today and I have to say for one time, I actually do agree with councillor Griffiths. He does not have the facts in front of him. What we have here is a petition from local residents, sixty-five who live in the direct vicinity of this now council-owned land, to name this Carter's Rest after the koala they found that had died on this site. So thank you councillor Griffiths for telling my residents who are listening tonight that you don't believe them. Because the reality is that this site is a very inconvenient truth for the ALP. It is proof that they do not support local residents and the Lord Mayor mentioned it today in his report, they are merely looking for issues to make political grandstands out to put their point forward and take down the LMP administration. This site was first raised in 2018 when lawfully trees were removed from the vacant blocks that were actually zoned low-density residential. What did we see happen? We saw every person with a red shirt from the local candidate to the federal candidate to the local state member rally the troops, pour money into the local Mount Gravat East Townhouse Action Group to buy their call flutes and buy their handouts, which the local MP has every right to do, screaming, "Save our site! Save Carrara and Nurrin Street!" We had a public meeting on the 2nd of December in 2018 where Corinne McMillan looked at me and said, "Krista, council has to buy this site." Carly Augustine stood up and said, "Council has to buy this site." The federal candidate, whose name I can't even remember now because that's how well she did, stood up and said, "Buy this site." Rod Harding was there as the Lord Mayor candidate. Wonder how that went? They were all with signs and pickets and I've got the picture and it was in the local paper, "Save our land!" Working on the theory that it would never happen and the inconvenient truth is councillor Griffiths, when you stood there holding the hand of the ALP candidate who was hopeless, we did exactly what you asked.
Point of order.
And that did not work for any of you.
Point of order councillor Griffiths?
Yeah, just claimed to be misrepresented.
It's noted. And also, can I ask all councillors to address all comments through the Chair and to refer to other councillors in third person, please? Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Through you, councillor Griffiths was on public meeting sites, supporting the local ALP candidate, calling for me to do exactly what we did. Exactly what we did. And there is the inconvenient truth. This did not play out in their political gameplan at all. So we have heard nothing but bitching and moaning for the two years since then.
Councillor Adams, I'm going to have to ask you to-
Sorry, whining and moaning, I take that out.
Oh, you better kick her out under 186A.
Well, that doesn't-
Come on, come on, come on Chair.
No, no, thank you.
Be fair about this.
No, I've asked for it to be withdrawn and it has.
Oh wow, yeah, you can ask for that to be withdrawn.
No, no, no.
That's not okay. If you swear in this chamber, you are out. That's your rule. That's your-
Councillor Adams, please continue.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order.
I move dissent.
Who have I got? Point of order councillor Johnston?
Seconded.
Yes, Mr Chairman. You have made it a rule in this place that there is no swearing. I have been ejected for swearing. It is unacceptable that you apply a different standard between me and councillor Adams. And Mr Chairman, under your own rules-
Yeah, no, thank you, I understand the point.
-that you have enforced, I ask you to eject her as you have others.
Councillor Adams, I have asked her to withdraw the comments she has done and I direct all councillors that there is to be no harsh language. We are to treat each other and all councillors with courtesy and there's to be no swearing in this place.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Hang on, I've got to deal with them in order. Councillor Cassidy, your point of order.
Yeah, I move dissent in your ruling.
Seconded.
Dissent in my ruling were by councillor Cassidy and councillor Johnston. Those who support the dissent, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
And those against, no and raise your hand.
No.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division. Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook. Please ring the bells.
What a joke.
One rule for them, one rule for me.
See what they're going to do with the annual report. Right? Is it only for the City Parking Business Unit? Please cease the bells. All right, those who are in support of the resolution, say aye and raise your hand so it may be counted.
Aye.
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 And those against, please raise your hand and say no and hold it there so it may be counted.
No.
No. Not.
Plaques, please read the result. Councillors, lower your hands.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and twenty against.
Thank you.
What a mockery.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order councillor Shree.
Joke. What a joke you are.
Chair, I don't want to re-litigate stuff that's just been discussed, but I do just want to note for the record that you've previously drawn quite a hard line, saying that all swearing is a basis for being kicked out of the chamber. And so by deciding not to do that in this case, you're essentially countermanding your previous ruling. And so what my, the understanding I'm taking away from this is that the word bitching is not a swear word. And personally, I don't think-
Now councillor Shree, I feel like you'd like an answer to that. It's not an acceptable word in this place and I have asked councillor Adams to withdraw it, which he did. And also, if you, no, no, I've just got to address the points you raised. And also, if you recall, the incidents you're talking about were an escalation after I'd asked people to stop doing it a number of times. And so-
That's untrue.
No, it is not untrue councillor Johnston.
You just kicked me out.
No, 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 it is absolutely not untrue. That's exactly what happened.
Point of order.
I, I'm just dealing with councillor Shree's. At the time, it was an escalation over a number of weeks where I asked people to correct their behaviour. I have not needed to this term, but I'm going to do it again. We will conduct ourselves in a manner expected of us. We will be courteous to one another. We will not swear in this place. I've, and it will not, no councillor, I will do it into the future. All right, councillor Shree, point of order?
Thanks. I just want to clarify that I do support the decision not to kick people out immediately. I think, I think that is an appropriate ruling and I support you in that decision, but I just ask that in future you make sure you-
No, I understand the point. And also, the rules that are incumbent on me require a range of actions as well from me. So I will now inform all councillors that improper language, including swearing, is not acceptable in this place. That's a warning to all councillors. Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Can I ask how much time I have left?
Six minutes, forty seconds.
Thank you. And can I apologise to the chamber? I did not recognise that as a word that would cause offence. I am very, very sorry and it will not be used again. And as I quickly did withdraw as soon as it was highlighted that people found that offensive. What I was talking about though was the offensiveness of the inconvenient truth, which we see before us with this petition, with the lack of support from the ALP, based on the fact that they didn't want it land bought in the first place, which actually goes directly against what they called on me to do for months and months and months. But when we did it, it didn't work in their gameplan. And we heard nothing and have heard nothing since then but whinging and moaning because they didn't like the idea that we did what they wanted them to do. I proudly stand before the Mount Gravat East residents as I did in March and am still here and have done every day since this was first raised to my attention to represent them. As councillor Griffiths said again, that it was six million plus, that is not the case. It was five point four and there will be a sale of a property which will gain well over a million dollars to go back into the bushland acquisitions. He can sit there and laugh and shake his head as much as he likes. But the only way to stop these townhouses was to buy-
The facts are the facts, Krista. The facts are the facts.
Name objections, please.
No, we know that the facts for the ALP are the convenient facts, not the true facts when it comes to them stating any amount of money that we spend on anything. Do not let the truth get in the way of a good smear, as we heard again from councillor Allen earlier this afternoon as well. The residents of Mount Gravat East wanted this land protected. The only way to do that was buy it. We have re-vegetated it with over three thousand, three and a half thousand trees. At that public meeting that day, the petition was signed. I've had many letters since then and I am very happy to stand here today and recommend this petition to chambers to represent the importance of this land to the Mount Gravat East residents, to the Koala Corridor through from Whites Hill, Mount Thompson, Glenderman Park and Mount Gravat Outlook in Tui Forest. It is an important connector. I look forward to, some of those trees already are getting quite large. The news team have done an absolutely amazing job. It will be kept in perpetuity, which I wish we could do it, Nathan, if the state government would just protect their own koala bushland as well. And I recommend this petition to the chambers.
Councillor Griffiths, you had a misrepresentation?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. It was noted by councillor Adams that I attended a public meeting calling for this land to be saved. I was never at a public meeting calling for this land to be saved. It's not true.
Thank you. Councillor Cunningham?
Thank you Chair and thank you to all the councillors.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order councillor Johnston?
Yes, I just flag I need a second. I seek leave to enable me to move an urgency motion suspending the local laws with the urgency motion calling on council to buy back the land at Chapman Place Oxley, which has been neglected by council and subject to unwanted development.
An urgency motion moved by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Griffiths. Could you please repeat that councillor Johnston for everybody?
Yes, my urgency motion is that the meeting's local laws are suspended to enable me to move an urgency motion calling on council to buy back the land at Chapman Place Oxley to protect it from development.
You've got three minutes. Please let me know your comments to urgency and why it must be dealt with now.
Yes, thank you. As we've just heard from the deputy mayor in great detail, one of the key reasons that land is purchased back in this city is to protect it from development. Now, unfortunately, that is a standard that apparently is only applied in LMP wards and these three residential blocks in Mount Gravat.
Councillor Johnston, I'm just going to stop you there. Your time is not being impinged upon. However, do you have this in writing so it can be distributed to the group electronically by the CCLO?
It's an urgency motion and I'll have it in writing if, if the administration allows me to move my motion.
Look, I'll allow it this time, but the system has been streamlined to make it really easy to do this. So in the future, can we please try and just type these up so we can provide them to everybody in the debate? Councillor Johnston, you've got two minutes, forty seconds.
Point of order.
Councillor Adams?
Just querying, can I claim misrepresentation from this debate? Because I'd like to claim misrepresentation on what councillor Johnson just said.
How about, I'll accept it. I'll check whether you can- How about, I'll accept it. I'll check whether you can in this, in this format and I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Two minutes, 40 seconds.
Nicole, you're still muted.
Okay. Oh, councillor Murphy, three whole minutes. Here we go. Now councillor Adams has said repeatedly tonight that the reason that this land had to be bought back at Mount Gravat was to save it from development. Now, this is a standard that they are only prepared to apply to their own blocks in marginal LNP wards. When it came to Chapman Place in Oxley, subject to a subdivision and construction of multiple small lot houses in a high endangered biodiversity area, this council approved the DA and refused to buy back the land. Now, it is essential that council supports an urgency motion now so that the land at Chapman Place can be bought back. It is unacceptable that councillor Adams, as a deputy mayor, claims that land has to be bought back in her ward, but will not apply the same standard to her own ward in, in our wards. Well, it's not even mine anymore. I look forward to councillor Hutton's support on this one, previously in Maruka Ward. You know, the standard has to be the same across the city. The big difference though with the land at Chapman Place is it was teeming with wildlife. It was teeming with native trees and vegetation and it was mapped within council's high ecological zone. It wasn't just three empty house blocks with a house on it at Mount Gravat and some palm trees. It was actually bushland. And what a surprise, what a surprise. That councillor Griffiths and I tried for, I don't know, how long? Two years, a year and a half at least. Councillor Griffiths for like five or six years as the local councillor. And it was supported by council officers. And yet this administration refused to buy the land back. There's one, one deal for LNP marginal seat holders and there's another deal for other seat holders in this city and it is absolutely wrong. Council should correct the error right now. If bushland is important enough to be saved in Mount Gravat, where there's palm trees and a house, then land of high ecological significance in Oxley should be bought back as well. We can't hear you, councillor Wines.
Excuse me. All right. So my decision is that because we are still in the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee, strictly, and it hasn't been concluded, and the remarks by councillor Adams that were, that she'll be discussing were made in that committee report, I will allow the misrepresentation. Councillor Adams, please limit your remarks to the matter at hand. Councillor Adams.
Councillor Johnson said that I made it clear, council has to buy back land to protect it. That is not what I said.
All right. Well, now put the resolution for urgency. All those in favour of urgency, say aye and please raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. And all those saying no, say no and please raise your hand.
No.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Griffiths. Please ring the bells. Please, please turn the bells up. All right. Those in support of the urgency motion, please say aye and raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
Aye.
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 Please lower your hands and those who do not support the urgency motion, please say no. Raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
No.
No.
Thank you. Please lower your hands. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr. Chair, the noes have it. Seven in favour and 20 against.
The noes have it. Councillor Cunningham, the conclusion of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee, please.
Thank you, Chair. Well, what a lively debate. Thank you, councillors, for your input. On the three points that you raised, councillor Griffiths. Number one, carbon is carbon. We spend a similar amount overseas as to what we do locally. Number two, the waterways you refer to have historically been treated more like drains, which flow into Oxley Creek, which is currently undergoing $100 million transformation, which you support. Number three, the land you refer to it, Nathan, is already in public ownership. Now, returning to the matter of Carter's Rest naming, Labour supported this before they were against it. And now in opposing the naming of this parcel of land as Carter's Rest, they're really showing residents in Mount Gravat East what they think of them. In the future, the record will show Labour's hypocrisy on the issue. And it's telling that now, despite all the critical matters facing the world, which affect our role as councillor, this is what the opposition is choosing to focus their attention on. Opposing the name of a parcel of land in a ward that they do not represent and where the community has already clearly said what they want. It says it all really. Relitigating the fights from the last election and ignoring.
I've never heard such hypocrisy.
Thank you, Chair.
Well read. Oh, excuse me. All right. I'll now put the resolutions, items A and C. All those in favour, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
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 And on, and those against, say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it. Item B, all those in favour, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And those against, say no and raise your hand.
No.
No.
The ayes have it. All right. Councillor, the City Standards and Community Health and Safety Committee report, please. Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 5th of May, 2020, be adopted.
Negative, Chair.
It's been moved by councillor Marks, seconded by councillor Toomey, that the report of the City Standards Community Health and Safety Committee meeting date, the 5th of May, 2020, be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Marks?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Before going to the report, can I echo the Lord Mayor's sentiments that he mentioned earlier about International Nurses Day? It's certainly a profession that was a major part of my life, going back to when I first started working for my local GP at the age of 16. So some years ago, so nurses have been a big part of my working career and I take my hat off to them. They continue, particularly in these trying times, to do work that many of us would not even dream of undertaking. There was a couple of questions I wanted to respond to as well. There was a question I noticed this morning from the committee. So as we mentioned in the committee this morning, the parks are in the process of being opened in preparation of being business as usual from Monday, the 16th of May. The Lord Mayor has already said this in his speech, that there's a general clean happening as well as a maintenance. And that will involve sweeping, clearing cobwebs, making sure everything's working fine, particularly regarding the barbecues or having an electrical check. But there will be no wholesale sanitising of playgrounds. There are over 1,000 playground parks, et cetera, and it's just not possible. We're asking that those who are using the equipment to use the, use the normal COVID-19 precautions and social distancing, as just as if they were going to the shops. And I'm sure that people and parents will do the right thing as far as that goes. There was another question here from councillor Cassidy. The, on item seven, the, in the contracts and tendering to supply and deliver of a large capacity mobile scalping screen for the value of $508,000, with a, achieved the highest value for money at 16.35%. I reliably informed that this is actually a beautiful machine. It's now in service at Brakelba. They say that it is a beauties in the eye of the holder, but there is a video. So if you Google R230 screener, McClosky International, you can watch a video of this machine in action. I watch, my husband watches a lot of the Mining for Gold programmes on Netflix and that shows you that there's a machine that much looks like this one that they use in the outback. And the purpose is to screen overburden and raw materials into soluble full products versus double handling as a spoil. And it was a larger capacity replacement item. So I look forward to going out there and meeting not only with Terry Bird, the manager of Ashwell and Aggregates, but also the Brakelba quarry and this new beauty machine. The other one was Contract Nine, the supply and delivery of two electric footpath sweepers. One is a replacement and the other one is new. The new one is for the expansion of some of the CBD path sweeping needs, but also allows us to continue using one of the other non-electric footway sweepers to get out of the city more, which is what we need. We need some of this stuff out in the suburbs. And the guys have been using it to do smaller streets in suburban area. And the new sweeper gives us a bit more scope to continue with that. There was also a discussion about the, the question that councillor Cumming raised in relation to two gum trees that removed. Now, these gum, they were two trees. I can confirm that two trees were removed during the installation of a playground and seating in the Rotary Park Heathwood. I have been advised that the subsurface root systems of the tree would have been compromised as a consequence of the project's excavation works. And a decision was made to remove them to successfully deliver the project. Councillors will know that it is not easy getting trees removed. As I often say to my residents, you normally have to sell your firstborn to get a tree removed and that hasn't changed. So it has to be something, you know, pretty unique for officers to agree to remove a tree. And it's generally always down to the health issues. I want to move now on to our committee presentation, which was a two-part presentation on the overview of field services and the cars branch. Obviously, Micah gave us the field services overview and, and gave us the overview on cars. There were a number of petitions, but going to leave that to the debate of the chamber and come back to answer any questions if there are any. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers?
Yes.
Councillor Cumming?
Yes, in relation to items B, C and D, they're all petitions relating to road resurfacing in the Winhamanley Ward. I raised, did raise the issue of those streets needing resurfacing during the election campaign. Councillor Howard was the chair at the time and she indicated that Glading and Millfoyle Street were to be done. And I couldn't find them anywhere in the budget, so I wondered how that could be the case. But at the end, they were funded out of savings. And the section of Millfoyle that needed doing was done just before the election and Glading Street was done just afterwards. So I thank councillor Howard for that. Major Street is another street which is in very poor condition and also has problems with a lot of water near the surface in that street. Sort of like springs running underneath the road, which makes it a difficult road to keep in good repair. But I hope the Lord Mayor is listening and he'll consider that one as a, it's because it's probably the roughest street in Winhamanley by some distance. And it's about, it's only about 200 metres long and about 50 or so houses. So it's not an exorbitant amount to get it done. So I support the response to the petition in items B, C and D. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly on the report, particularly the overview of field services and cars, just a few brief comments on that. I'm really disappointed that we have to read in the annual plan that council has cut mowing over the last three months. It is incredibly disappointing to see that this council deliberately cut four mows out of the summer mowing schedule. Okay, it was a little bit dry at the beginning of the year, but it's since rained and the grass has gone berserk. It is just shocking that this council thinks that reducing mowing in parks and roadsides is an acceptable course of action. It is immediately clear to me now why things have got out of hand in my ward. And in every riverside park around the ward, along roadsides everywhere, in parks down near Oxley Creek, the grass has been two metres high. I mean, I posted photos today and I think people were quite shocked as to how bad it actually was. And to find out that this administration deliberately made a decision to cut mowing services in summer in Brisbane, has to be one of the most incompetent and ridiculous decisions that this administration has made. Honestly, I'd put it up there with, with the city plan debacle. Because who cuts mowing in the middle of Brisbane in a subtropical suburb? At the time when Brisbane was cutting mowing, we all got an email. We all got an email from the branch manager saying, if you're having a problem with areas not being mowed, please let us know. I mean, it was logging job after job. I sent through lists of where mowing needs to be done. I've taken the head of asset services out to have a look. I've taken councillor Marks out to have a look. And to find out that this council is cutting mowing the most basic service that residents of Brisbane expect us to do for them is not right. I, I am just disgusted by the behaviour of this administration and the failure to exercise the appropriate amount of due diligence to do maintenance works in the suburb of Brisbane. And now there is a massive problem because the grass is two metres high in most areas. Councillor Marks won't have any extra money because now a global pandemic is it. So councillor Howard obviously wasn't interested in making sure the right thing was done when she was in charge of this portfolio. And there is a huge legacy project. It is shocking how bad the mowing is out in my ward. Months go by, requests for mowing don't get done, requests for edging don't get done. And we have to ask over and over again. And it is clear now, it is because this administration, under this Lord Mayor, has cut mowing. So come clean, councillor Howard, why did you do this? It is not acceptable. Were you told that the grass wasn't growing? Well, yes, it does. And okay, mowing doesn't always happen on a strict two-week cycle because it might be dry one week and pouring rain the next week. But you bank those mows so that when they're needed, they get done. And the problem with the. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. Please go ahead.
Hello?
Yeah, you can be heard.
Hello? Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
God, we need to be back in the chamber. This is just ridiculous. Mowing has to be done on a regular basis. It must be done to a satisfactory standard. And there is absolutely no way this administration should be cutting mowing services in the middle of summer. I am so disappointed to find out that there is a reason beyond the general contractor incompetence, in my view, that this is happening. And it is a shameful indictment on this LNP administration that they have cut mowing services in this city over the last few months. There is a big problem to fix. We specifically put new contracts in to mow them, hard to mow areas. And at the time these contracts went through, I raised all of these issues. And I was assured, yes, councillor, there will be money to mow the hard to maintain areas where there might be a slope or an uneven edge. That is clearly not happening. And the head of asset services has told me that, that the areas that I've shown him are not on the list for that kind of mowing. It is not good enough. And to read in the council papers today that basic services like mowing have been cut by this LNP administration is just disgraceful. Oh, and if the petition for the skate park is sitting in this committee, I would ask Mr. Chairman, that the chairman brings it through as soon as possible for debate and consideration. Thank you.
Further speakers? Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
I can.
Fantastic.
Look, what we've just heard from councillor Johnston is another classic example of where time and time again, she speaks in this place with inaccurate information and portrays it as somehow the truth. What councillor Johnston was inaccurately referring to was a period of drought when it hardly rained at all for months and months and months in the second half of last year. And
Point of order, point of order councillor Johnston?
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted, Lord Mayor?
I remember distinctly getting complaints, including Lord Merrill letters, a whole range of complaints through the call centre saying, from residents, saying, stop mowing, you are just mowing dust. And so councillor Johnston clearly has a very short memory because the only reduction in mowing that has occurred is during a drought when there was literally no grass to mow. And all we had right across the city was a dust bowl. And it would have been a gross waste of rate payer money to mow grass that didn't exist or didn't require mowing. And I'm not in the business of spending rate payers' money on contracts to mow grass that doesn't need mowing. What I can say though, is that once the growing conditions kicked in, council went immediately back to its regular schedule of mowing. And I remember all the way through that summer growing period, we were on a two-week cut cycle for the majority of councils' parks right across the city where they were effectively on a back-to-back mowing schedule. So any suggestion that there's been a cut to needed mowing services is simply not the case. We scaled back on mowing the dirt during a drought. That is all that's happened here. And this reflects the historic, I guess, expenditure of council in the second half of last year. So there has been no reduction to the cutting of grass during the growing season when it is required to grow. And in many respects, this particular budget item operates a bit like the mosquito spraying where if you need to cut more, you cut more. If you need to cut less, you cut less. There is no point wasting rate payers' money cutting grass during a drought and kicking up dust, getting complaints from residents. And so we pulled back on the cutting at that stage and then it was geared up fully to our record high level of cutting in the growing season when it was required. That is the truth of the matter, not the misrepresentation that we've heard from councillor Johnston, where she implied that a reduction in mowing happened during the growing season. It did not.
Councillor Johnson, your misrepresentation, please leave me your comments to the misrepresentation at hand.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I referred to the, the Lord Mayor has misrepresented me and lied.
Councillor Johnston, you are among the people quickest, quickest to jump onto people for using the wrong sort of words. Please do not use that language.
The Lord Mayor has misrepresented what I've said and deliberately misled the residents of Brisbane. I was referring to the annual operational plan progress report, which was from January to March. And on page eight, it clearly states that four cuts were removed during January to March, peak growing season when it was
All right, further speakers? I see no further speakers, councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank councillor Cumming for his support of those petitions. As he mentioned, two of those street resurfacings had been done before we actually got the petition through committee. And as I explained this morning in committee, what happens is, as we all know, road resurfacing goes on the capital listing in budget. There's a certain dollar value attached to that. Obviously, if the road resurfacing is done under that dollar value, then there's what's money left over. And then the officers are able to go back and manage to pick up and resurface extra streets that would not necessarily be listed as capital listing. And I'm pretty sure most of the councillors here would have had at least one or two streets done under that program where they're not listed in the budget book, but they get done anyway from the savings that we were able to maintain. Just to finish off on the grass cutting, I, can I comment by saying that, yes, I did go out to councillor Johnson's ward, as I have with councillor Toomey Strunk, councillor Hammond and councillor Landers. And from my understanding, there's five more councillors who have made the appointment for me to come out and see them all. The idea of me visiting all of these people, these council wards, is to get an idea across the whole city, as in the CBD and the suburbs, about the city standards, which is what this portfolio is all about. The issue with the grass that councillor Johnson is specifically referring to is grass growing on the bankmen of her riverside parks. And I agreed with her that they were long and we did discuss what we were going to do in that space. And the decision was, yes, there was apparently a decision about going on to a specialist mowing schedule, which is something I'm talking to officers about. There's also the decision and the discussion needs to be about some sort of specialist mowing equipment that potentially our mower contractors do or don't have. That's something we're looking into. And as far as the cuts of the cutting, it actually, councillor Johnson, you mentioned that we should bank the mows. Can I say that's exactly what we did do? So there are four mows, mows, what they call their bank postponed because it was in dry times at the time. And that was earlier this year. And what happens is we bank those mowing schedules, the money doesn't go anywhere. And then when we need to do extra mowing, we've got that money there for it. The mowing you're talking about is quite specifically the riverside bank
And the roadside and the park.
No interjections.
And I agree with you on that. And as I said to you, we are going to be looking at that and talking to the mowing contractors about the specialist equipment that was required for that. So if there's no other debate, I thank everybody for their support of the committee and presentations.
I'm going to put the resolution, all those in favour, say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Thank you. And those against, say no and raise your hands. The ayes have it. Councilors, the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, please. Councillor Howard?
Yes, I'm the, hang on. I'm just having a bit of technical trouble. There we go. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 5th of May, 2020 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Landers. The report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 5th of May, 2020 be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Howard?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would like to echo the Lord Mayor and councillor Marks's comments about our wonderful nurses and particularly this year because it recognises 200 years since the birth of the amazing Florence Nightingale. So I think everyone in the chamber will agree with me that the heroic efforts over the last few months have just been amazing. And what they do every single day and night to help us in our greatest time of need is very much valued by all of us. Moving on to the committee report, Chair, last week, we were given an informative presentation on all the wonderful work that our dedicated officers do to develop vibrant and caring local Brisbane communities as part of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy. And as Chair of this committee, I'm honoured with the privilege of working alongside our award-winning contact centre, our passionate libraries team, who deliver the largest library service in the nation, our dedicated connected communities and community facilities and venues team, who work tirelessly every day to deliver some of our most loved services to the residents of Brisbane. So I do thank them for their tireless hard work. And I commend the report to the chamber. There were a number of petitions as well. I'll leave that for the chamber to debate and recommend the report to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to be speaking on items B, C and D today, Mr. Chair. I want to start with item C. This is the petition requesting council fund the planning, design and renovation of the Blimber Library. Mr. Chair, we won't be supporting this recommendation today. This petition was presented to council back in March 2019, over 12 months ago, with 265 signatures. It has taken this LNP administration over 12 months to process the petition and come back with a no. Sorry, all funds expended. The response is a mere five lines, Mr. Chair. No explanation, no analysis and no vision for the future of this building, which is the heart and soul of Blimber. This petition was presented prior to the last budget. And in fact, Mr. Chair, I spoke about this petition during the budget last year and the complete failure of the LNP administration at that time to process a petition in a timely fashion. I couldn't have anticipated, Mr. Chair, it would take further 11 months to get this response. There wasn't time in the committee meeting to ask questions about this petition because the presentation went for about 27 of the 30 minutes allocated. So I'll ask them now and look forward to response from our new chairperson, councillor Howard. So through you, Mr. Chair, councillor Howard, why did this petition take so long to come back with this recommendation? Why wasn't there the foresight to at least recommend that this project be listed in the budget for the 2021 financial year? And what has this administration got against the Blimber Library? Is the issue that it is a Labour ward and you expended your Labour quota with the Sangate Library? Or is there some other issue? Five and a half years ago, Mr. Chair, the former councillor for Morningside ran a petition in very similar terms to this one that attracted over 755 signatures. So in the last five and a half years, we have had over 1,000 locals petition this LNP administration for an upgrade. I don't know what it will take for this council to start actually listening to local residents. We have seen time and time again in this place a complete disregard by the LNP for the people this council is meant to serve, particularly if they happen to reside in a Labour area. There is no vision from the LNP when it comes to the opportunities presented by the Blimber Library. This library is the hub of our local community. It is nestled at the top of Oxford Street, right next to Akindy and in very close proximity to the Blimber State School. This is a fantastic opportunity to open the library up and have an integrated indoor-outdoor learning area and meeting space. There is a huge underutilized parcel of land next to the library, which presents an amazing opportunity. The vehicle access to the library is quite frankly just dangerous. We have a pedestrian crossing that literally meets the driveway entrance to the library. So you have school kids and those at the local Kindy trying to navigate the driveway, the pedestrian crossing, and it's an absolute disaster waiting to happen. We know that the Morningside ward and particularly Blimber are growing exponentially. We have the Blimber barracks development a stone's throw away from the library that will see hundreds of new residents move into the area. But our local facilities are falling behind and not able to keep up with demand. It is time for council to have the strategic vision, not only for the city, but for our library services within it. The Blimber Library is a huge opportunity to improve our suburban infrastructure. The shortsightedness of this response is quite frankly appalling, Mr. Chair. There is so much potential here and it is incredibly frustrating to see the incredible work that has been done in other libraries across the city where Blimber remains ignored. Next month, we will see the budget rolled out. There seems to be no rhyme or reason to the decision-making processes in this LNP administration. I will continue to push for funding of this project because this is what my community and residents deserve and it's well overdue. For those reasons, we won't be supporting that item today. That brings me to item D, Mr. Chair, the petition requesting that council relocate the Bramble Bay Pony Club. Mr. Chair, again, this petition was presented to council on 5th May, 2019. One year ago, Mr. Chair, it's this petition's actual anniversary. Mr. Chair, given the period of time that has passed since this petition was first raised, you would expect that a lot of progress has been made on this issue by the LNP council. But you'd be mistaken, Mr. Chair, this is absolutely not the case. And the Bramble Bay Pony Club is even more in the dark now than they were at the time when this petition was launched. Quite literally, Mr. Chair, in the dark. That is because, Mr. Chair, this council does not care about our community clubs. They are happy to take their land without a plan, without proper consultation, and then offer to compensate them with lighting that they have failed to deliver. Once again, Mr. Chair, there was no time for questions in committee on this issue. So I'll ask them now. And I would love councillor Landers, who is the local councillor, to answer them. I'm sure, Mr. Chair, she'll have lots to say on this issue, given it is in her local area. So through you, Mr. Chair, my questions for councillor Landers are as follows. How many times has she met with the Bramble Bay Pony Club? How many emails has she personally sent to the Bramble Bay Pony Club on this issue in an attempt to resolve the outstanding issues? How long will it take for this club to finally have a home? When can they expect to see the promised lighting upgrades delivered, which have been ongoing since last year? And a few questions through you, Mr. Chair, for councillor Howard. Again, why has this petition taken 12 months to return to this chamber? Why has it taken so long to process the promised lighting upgrade? How many times has her office briefed or met with councillor Landers on this issue? Or her predecessor? 1,888 signatories to this petition, Mr. Chair. Quite possibly one of the largest petitions to come through this place in recent times. The petition background noted that the Bramble Bay Pony Club had provided valuable opportunities to the local community for many years. What it fails to mention, Mr. Chair, many years is in fact 40 years. The Lord Mayor likes to talk about having a plan. Clearly, Mr. Chair, he had no plan when it came to the Bramble Bay Pony Club, besides displacing a club with a 40-year history from their local area. And the LNP did it with the support of their local councillor at the time, the person who was meant to act in their best interests. It's absolutely shameful, Mr. Chair. At the time, they were told they had a month to move. A club with a 40-year history were given one month and no new site. At the time, they were told it would be 18 months until a new site could be found. Mr. Chair, we are now almost 18 months down the track and no new home seems to be on the horizon for this club. Mr. Chair, as an interim measure, most of the Bramble Bay Pony Club ended up at the Redcliffe Pony Club and a commitment was made to upgrade the lighting at Redcliffe by council. A $40,000 to $50,000 commitment. Strangely, none of that is mentioned in this petition response, Mr. Chair, although it clearly is relevant, given that the money has not been forthcoming. Another demonstration of this LNP's council absolutely dismal track record when it comes to supporting our local clubs, Mr. Chair. The Bramble Bay Pony Club deserves better. They deserve to have regular communication from council. They deserve active and proper representation from their local councillor. But most importantly, Mr. Chair, they deserve a home. So, Mr. Chair, we won't be supporting this recommendation today because it says nothing, it does nothing and it means nothing because actions speak louder than words, Mr. Chair. And this LNP council is all talk and no action. Finally, Mr. Chair, on item B, do I have much time left, Mr. Chair?
Two minutes.
Thank you. This is the petition that council build a vert ramp at Wollongaba. We won't be supporting this petition recommendation that pretty much just ignores over 825 Brisbane residents. This petition was very clear in its request, a vert ramp in the Gaba. What response do we have from the LNP? Helpfully, a summary of other BMX facilities are available, which are available elsewhere in the city, not in the Gaba. A concession that the city plan does say there should be skateboarding and BMX facilities within a three to five kilometre radius of most residents within the city. Then hopefully indicates that the local councillor should fund the project themselves from the Lord Mayor's Suburban Enhancement Fund. Can I also just put on record that the last time a councillor did that in this place, she copped abuse from the then Lord Mayor that it was some kind of vanity project. But, you know, who knows, maybe those views left the building when he did. Finally, another concession that a new vert ramp is warranted within Brisbane, perhaps not in the Gaba, as the petitioners had requested, should a suitable site become available. Mr. Chair, no analysis or audit or information about Gaba, about Wollongaba and if or where there may or may not be a suitable site. No recognition that the eastern suburbs, particularly around Cooperoo, have been asking for BMX facilities. And in fact, there is another petition currently before council to that effect. As recently as last week, Mr. Chair, there were reports in the eastern suburbs, local media, that there was a need for more BMX facilities to deal with BMX riders, in particular inappropriately utilizing bushland due to the lack of facilities. Labour cannot possibly support this recommendation tonight because it is a nothing response. It doesn't address the concerns of petitioners and makes an absolute farce of the petition process. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Shire?
Thanks, Chair. I also just want to speak on the petition regarding the vert ramp in Wollongaba. I'm obviously very supportive of building a vert ramp in the Gaba. And I guess I'm a little disappointed that it's taken council such a long time to even get to the point of responding to the petition in this way. And I'd be interested if councillor Howard is able to explain why it is that this petition, which was lodged quite a long time ago now, is only now is only now coming through for a response that's not particularly helpful anyway. But this petition, I presented this on the 6th of November 2018. 6th of November 2018, this petition was brought to council. It's now May 2020 and the only response from council has been to say, yeah, a vert ramp would be nice, but where do we put it? And I think that highlights a key concern that this council has not addressed, which is that there's simply a gross undersupply of public green space and public parkland within the suburb of Wollongaba and particularly the northern and western sides of Wollongaba. There's been significant high-density development in those areas over the past few years. A lot of people, including families with kids, a lot of teenagers, moving into high-density apartments where they don't have private backyards for exercise and they don't have safe streets to ride their bikes around. So actually, these kinds of facilities, skate facilities and BMX facilities, et cetera, are really important for inner-city communities because there's nowhere else for their kids to exercise and recreate. And as well for adults, the same applies. So I'm really, to be honest, quite impressed that a bunch of skaters pulled together a petition of 825 signatures. Like, that's a significant effort. And I think it shows the passion and eagerness that the community has for this piece of infrastructure. I'm also a bit disappointed that the implication of the petition is just that I should cannibalise the footpaths and playgrounds budget to play for something which is clearly a citywide facility. But I would be willing to work constructively with the administration to allocate a proportion of budget from my suburban enhancement fund if that could be combined with park upgrade money or facilities money from the council's annual budget. So I'll put that offer on the table and say that I'm willing to put some money from my local discretionary park upgrades budget towards this project if the council is willing to put some in as well. The broader problem, though, is that we don't have public spaces where we can put these facilities because council's parks planners and the Lord Mayor and the Development Services team have failed to plan ahead for population growth and have failed to provide enough usable public parkland and usable public spaces within the Gabbah Ward. So I'm going to keep looking for space where we can put this, but it's going to be really hard to find any because we only have a couple of parks within the suburb of Wollongaba and they're already very crowded and close to residential areas, et cetera. But I hope that councillor Howard, if I do come back to you with a recommendation for a specific site, that you will be open to it and that you won't put up unnecessary blocks. My big concern is that in the inner city, we have very few public spaces that are a long distance away from residential housing. And council has a general rule about not wanting to put skate facilities too close to residential properties. But the simple fact is that there aren't any public spaces within the Wollongaba suburb that aren't close to residential properties. So hopefully, if the council administration is serious about supporting skate infrastructure in the inner city, there'll be some flexibility around those general rules. And it would be interesting to hear from councillor Howard about how she sees that being implemented in practical terms. And will she be willing to support skate facilities that might be a little bit closer to residential homes than council would normally contemplate if it were delivering a skate facility further out in the suburbs? So I'll just conclude by saying that I'm really keen to work constructively with the rest of the council on this project. But it's kind of up to council to identify and provide a space. And so far, the administration hasn't done that. And I'm a little bit disappointed that it's taken such a long time to deliver such a do-nothing response.
Further speakers? I see no hands. So councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair. And I'll start with the vert ramp petition. And thank councillor Shree for his comments. And like him, I also represent an inner-city area. And of course, you know, I have young people that are also wanting these types of ramps and very limited space, as you say, with people who live around it who aren't that keen about that type of activity. But can I say to you, through you, Mr Chair, if I could invite councillor Shree to contact me? I'm very happy to have a conversation, no promises at all. I'd just like to have a conversation with you and see where we can go with that. In terms of the Bramble Bay Pony Club petition, can I say that councillor Cooper worked very hard with the Bramble Bay Pony Club and that I am sure that councillor Sandy Landers will continue that. I'm sure that councillors...
No interjections, please. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Chair. Through you, Mr Chair, and to councillor Landers. I'm very happy again to work with councillor Landers and the Bramble Bay Pony Club. Through you, Mr Chair, it is very difficult to respond to the questions that have been asked when I'm interrupted all the time.
I know. I've been asking people to limit their interjections to allow the speaker to be heard. And that's something that I'm going to continue to do. Please, but please continue.
Thank you, Mr Chair, thank you. And as I was saying, through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Landers, I'm very happy to work with her and with the Bramble Bay Pony Club to have a look at the situation. Finally, if we can move to the petition regarding the Belimba Library. Through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Cook, I have to say, we love all libraries. And can I say it's, this administration, to my knowledge, has never closed the library, unlike the opposition, who in fact have closed libraries. So people in glass houses probably should not throw stones until such time as they consider.
I've never closed a library.
So can I...
What libraries have I closed?
In, Mr Chair, I heard...
Councillors, please, councillors, please. I know that, I appreciate that we've been here a little while and that people are becoming impatient. But please allow councillor Howard to finish her comments so that we can move on to the next item. Councillor Howard.
Mr Chair, through you and to councillor Cook, I heard her in silence so that I could listen very carefully to what she said. And through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Cook, council's budget is not unlimited. And so every year, the budget is allocated to projects according to citywide priorities. This financial year, council delivered refurbishments... This financial year, council delivered refurbishments of Ash Grove, Sangate, I didn't think Sangate was an LMP ward, but perhaps I'm mistaken, and Stones Corner Libraries. If this is the project... If this is a project that you believe important to your local community, I trust that you took the opportunity to put forward a budget submission for the next financial year's budget. And as you know, councillor Cook, through you, Mr Chair, that will be assessed through the budget process. So, Mr Chair, through you, and could I just finish by saying to you that I'm very happy to talk to any of the councillors about any issues. They just need to contact me. We've sent an email today advising people how they can do that. So very happy to hear from anyone. And on that note, I commend the reports to the chamber.
Now, can I put the resolution, all those in favour, say aye and raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
And those against, say no and raise your hand?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, councillors. Division called by councillor Cook and councillor Cassidy, ayes to my, no, please ring the bells. Councillors, all those in favour, please say aye, raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
Aye.
Please lower your hands. And those voting no, please say no and raise your hand and hold it there so it may be counted.
No.
No.
Thank you. Please lower your hands. Claws, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 20 in favour and 7 against.
Thank you, the ayes have it. We'll now move on to the next report. Excuse me, councillors, the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee, please. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 5th of May 2020 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Huang, that the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 5th of May 2020 be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Allen?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before moving to the committee report, I did want to touch upon several points that might have been missed during the question time item on the Economic Recovery Task Force. And specifically, the points I wanted to make are, one, that the task force has an external consultative group that is made up of permanent and casual contributors who help to inform the task force. The Economic Recovery Task Force is focused on providing targeted support to businesses in Brisbane. And obviously, a number of these initiatives will be considered in budget development. And there are a range of things that council can do, such as obviously minimising red tape and things that might hinder economic recovery. We would encourage everybody to get out and support their local businesses as restrictions are lifted. And as mentioned in that response in question time, there is a survey that's now available called the Business in Brisbane Economic Recovery Survey. It's going to be distributed to 15,000 businesses and it's available on the council website. And we would encourage all councillors to support that survey. Now, moving to the committee presentation, we had a presentation on net borrowings, investments and funding. And while that's a fairly dry topic, it has a very important section where the corporate treasurer reports on sort of global, domestic and local economic conditions. And not surprisingly, that report focused quite heavily on the impact of the COVID pandemic. Clearly, the message, both globally, domestically and locally, is pretty grim. And I think that certainly the outlook in the near term is going to be quite challenging. The report highlighted some of the potential outcomes for employment domestically and also highlighted some of the economic measures that are being undertaken by the federal government and state government to stimulate activity as we work our way through the lifting of restrictions and out through the other side. I won't dwell on that report any longer and I'll leave further debate to the meeting.
Further speakers? Councillor Strunk. Councillor Strunk. Please push F5. F8, excuse me, councillor, F8.
Is that better?
That's it. Thank you. Please continue.
Thanks for the assist. Okay, so I think I'm just going to push that away. Okay, so I don't want to speak on the presentation, but I want to speak on some of the payments that were made. And I just wanted to initially thank the chair for sending me through the results of the 93 questions that we posed, which incorporated looking through about 3,000 pages of information. And I just want to also acknowledge my very dedicated team here in the ward office who helped me look through some of this or helped me prepare it anyways. And I just want to acknowledge that as well. Now, there was just a few items that I would like to ask the chair to look into or maybe he can respond in his reply. But there was an extraordinary amount of money that was expended on ferry terminals and the upgrades thereof. And it was legal advice about upgrades of ferry terminals. And I know we're undertaking a few upgrades of a few ferry terminals, but I just find it extraordinary that amounts of $21,000 up to $45,000...
So councillor Strunk, I'm going to have to just stop you just really quickly. I know that the information provided that you're referring to was provided to you in the committee. However, it's not strictly referred to in the report. Now, because it's not referred to in the report, the rules limit me about what I can allow as relevant debate. However, in this instance, because that information was provided to you as part of the committee, I will allow it at this time. I just wanted to make that very brief statement there. Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. So anyways, there was an extraordinary amount of money expended on legal advice or assistance for upgrades of ferry terminal anywhere from $21,000 up to $45,000, which totaled out seven payments of $229,000. So I just thought that was an extraordinary amount of money to be expended and I thought I would ask that question of the chair. There also is another matter that a barrister gave a or handed in an account for, and that was for legal services. And it was in regard, it was on page 18 of the reply that the chair gave us under legal services for Chris Tam. And it just said for ongoing district court matter. And it was limited to that expression. And I wanted to know what that ongoing court matter is and how long it has been ongoing for. And I don't know if we could possibly ask him how long it's going to take because this is a legal matter. Anyways, those were the two items that I wanted to ask in regards to the payments. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? I see no, no hands moving. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. To councillor Strunk's questions, very happy to take those on notice. And if he could just provide us with the question numbers via an email and the specifics of the information he's seeking, very happy to have a look at that for him.
I will now put the resolution, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
And raise your hand.
Aye.
And all those against, please lower your hands, all those against, say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have a petition here. It's an e-petition from someone in Willawon to do with compost bins for Brisbane.
Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to present a petition to council to install calming devices in Lunga Street Karina.
Councillor Adaman.
Mr Chair, I have a petition regarding footpath and speed limits from residents on Bealby Road, Kenmore Hills.
Anyone else? I myself have a petition regarding pedestrian safety on Pickering Street, Inogra and Gaythorn, the Inogra-Gathon border. May I please have a motion to accept the petitions?
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded. I have a resolution moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Griffiths, that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And those against, say no and raise your hand. The ayes have it. Councillors, general business. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of a councillor conduct review panel order? Are there any matters of general business? Are there any matters of general business? Councillor, uh, Hutton. Um, councillors, I will remind you that councillor Hutton is presenting her first oral maiden speech. Congratulations, councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I am proud and honoured to address the chamber today as the councillor for the Ward of Jamboree, whose people I thank for the enormous trust they have placed in me and our Lord Mayor, Adrian Schrinner. Every councillor comes to the chamber to represent their own community, each with its own cha- characteristics and unique quirks that together combine to create the rich tapestry of our city, one that I am very proud to serve. I've always been interested in council for its ability to make a tangible difference in people's lives. It is often the small things, the well-maintained streets, the libraries and parks, that make a big difference and enrich our communities on a daily basis. I am passionate about ensuring that we continue to deliver the best facilities, parks and infrastructure to assist young and old alike to live their best lives in our ward and across Brisbane. However, I am passionate about ensuring that we continue to explore opportunities that enhance and advance our city on a bigger scale. Historical events like Expo eighty eight and our future Olympic bid have in the past and will continue to drive innovation and investment in our city. I love this city and I'm passionate to ensure that its future is vibrant and bright. I've called the Jamboree Ward home for my entire life. It was where I was raised, where I went to school, where I got my first job and it's now where Nat and I choose to raise our own family. It is both a pl- a pleasure and a privilege to serve as the councillor for this wonderful part of this great city. The Jamboree Ward is located in Brisbane's west. Some of its best features include Rocks Riverside Park, the Bush Trail Walk at Westlake, the Ginderley Boat Ramp and the world-class BMX track at Dara. Speaking of Dara, I may be biased, but Dara is what I would call a raw diamond in our city's crown. It has all the excellent qualities of a diamond, but a unique raw beauty that appeals to those who are looking for something different. Dara today is a reflection of a city, of a history steeped in hard work and acceptance of newcomers. Over many years, immigrants from Poland, Italy and Vietnam settled in Dara. The fact everyone was an outsider created a sense of unity and thus Dara's identity was born. Nat and I have lived in Dara for the lu- for the past eleven years. It is a unique community with a heart of gold. The long, narrow blocks with low chain wire fences mean that neighbours stop and chat and swap their homegrown produce when it's in season. This friendliness, connection and acceptance, in my eyes, makes it one of the best places to live in our city. The Brisbane River, the Big Brown Snake, manages to wrap itself around most of the Jamboree suburbs. As a child, this river created some amazing memories, fishing, rafting and general mischief. In nineteen seventy four and two thousand and eleven, this brown snake flooded many suburbs in our ward, destroying homes and changing lives. A time in our history that residents will never forget. But despite these tragedies, we found exceptional unity and emotional strength, forming the glue that continues to hold our community together. As again, our community faces a new challenge with a global pandemic, I hope we continue to see widespread altruism, looking beyond ourselves to help others. In my own career, I've been fortunate to see the incredible generosity of everyday Australians. Over the past decade, I've helped to raise millions of dollars for medical research with Cancer Council Queensland and most recently with Wesley Medical Research. I am deeply passionate about medical research as I've seen firsthand its ability to transform lives. One of the most rewarding aspects of the role was connecting philanthropists with dedicated doctors and patients to result, to resolve some of the toughest medical challenges. When you connect the right people with the right experiences and the right expertise, miracles can happen. I hope to be able to assist in a similar way the Jamboree Ward by connecting people to solve problems and make a difference. Someone who has made a difference in my life is my grandmother, Mary Fluke, who on Saturday will be celebrating her hundred and fifth birthday. Although I don't have enough time to delve into the depths of her life, her determination, quick wit and positive mental attitude has been an inspiration to me. My parents, Sue and Chris Fluke, both Sydney Siders, moved to Brisbane in nineteen seventy two, seeking career opportunities afforded by state coalition government. My parent, my father, with a commerce background, worked in sales across a range of businesses and eventually with further education, established his own financial planning business. After losing his own father at a young age, dad understood the value of good advice and was kind in sharing this, not just with those who could afford it, but with those who needed it. My parents throughout life taught us a lot about compassion and understanding the value of being a team player, not just in our family, but in the community. I have deep admiration for my mother, Sue, who for the fa- for the past forty five years has been the backbone of our family. I remember at age four, mum returning to work part-time at Bylow Middle Park to ensure we could afford a Catholic education. Thank you both for the sacrifices you have made to give Emma, Stephen, Lucy and I every opportunity to succeed at life. I'm grateful for my Catholic face, faith. This moral compass will continue to ground me and motivate me as I serve this community. I'm a firm believer that empathy is not a unique value of the left in politics, nor integrity only that of the right. I am passionate about ensuring that I serve my community with both my head and my heart. I'm proud to be part of the Liberal National Party and the values which it upholds. It is only with this party's support that I am able to stand here today. I want to acknowledge those who have made this opportunity possible. Over a hundred and twenty individuals, party members, family and friends, were responsible for this achievement. It was both humbling and overwhelming to receive support from so many. As dangerous, as dangerous as it is, I'd like to particularly thank Malcolm and Kirsty Cole, Senator Paul and Louise Scar, doctors John and Janet Allen, Terry Brennan and Terri Anne Eden Jones, Emily Noller, Martin Gillies, Ben Cozy, Jock Power, Tim Wright, Claire Gunton, Josh Christian, Judy Thompson, Thomas and many more. Thank you to all the people, many of who are online tonight, who rightly share in this victory. Thank you.
You're here.
I want to acknowledge my predecessor, Matthew Burke. You are a very hard act to follow. Thank you for your trust, friendship and ongoing support. We are grateful for the dedication and commitment to the Jamboree Ward for the past twelve years. I'll be working very hard to fill those shoes that you have left behind. To my boys Angus, Ted and Jack, you are by far my biggest achievement. Thank you for keeping me grounded and continuing to remind me about what's important in life. My challenge in this place is to ensure that I work hard so you inherit an even more incredible city in the future. I'm, I'm so grateful for the unyielding support of my best friend for the last fourteen years. The rock of my family, the love of my life, Nat Hutton. You have been nothing short of exceptional. You are my co-traveller on this journey and it's only because of you that I stand here today. To the very deserving people of Jamboree, it is my mission to work tirelessly for you, to collaborate and spread opportunity to every corner of our ward. It is with honour that I'm able to serve a community that has given me so much and I'm proud to be your voice in city hall and to further enhance the rich tapestry of our city. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, councillor Hutton, welcome. Are there any further matters of general business? I see no hands. I declare the meeting closed.